Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting two of the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners. It is 7:06 PM, July 19th, or July 9th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Secretary Savage, could you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Tuckey.
Here.
Commissioner Zubek.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Vice President Steele.
Here.
President Ellis.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And this board did not have an executive session prior to this meeting. And now we're up to item six, presentation of proclamations. So first, we have a proclamation for the family of Honorable Judge Michael J. Smith.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brendan. First, to the board, thank you very much for allowing me to read this into the record. It's quite an honor. Whereas the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes the honorable and exceptional public service of Magisterial District Judge Michael Smith, and whereas prior to his judicial service, Judge Smith dedicated 27 years to the Swatara Township Police Department, beginning his career in 1977 and retiring in January of 2005 as a seasoned detective in the Criminal Investigations Division specializing in child abuse, sexual assault, and major homicide investigations, as well as serving on both the Swatara Township and Dolphin County Crisis Response Teams for 11 years as a team leader and physical fitness coordinator. And whereas Judge Smith further contributed to the development of future law enforcement officers as a physical fitness trainer at the Municipal Police Academy at HAC and brought to the bench a distinguished academic background, including an Associate of Arts in Police Administration from HAC, a Bachelor of Science in Administration of Justice and Public Safety from Virginia Commonwealth University, and certification from the Minor Judiciary Education Board of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court in 2004. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners does hereby honor and recognize Magisterial District Judge Michael Smith for his outstanding contributions to public safety, justice, and the betterment of our community. His steadfast dedication and exemplary service are a lasting legacy for the citizens of Swatara Township and beyond. And witness whereof, we, the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners, have hereunto set our hands and caused this proclamation to be executed on this ninth day of July 2025. Thank you very much.
Is it okay if I, I'm the committee chair of public safety, and I know all of us have a lot of thoughts going through our minds, and I was just gonna say at this point, if there's, you're up there, Superintendent Stouffer, if there's anything you wanted to say, and then if each commissioner kinda went down the line, but just to set this up for the audience, it was our last meeting down here in this room. Judge Smith swore in our fifth patrol dog, which was Bain, which was a replacement for our first patrol dog in this recent cycle, Kix. And he stood here and took pictures with us. He was the absolute picture of health, a very active man at 72. So, you know, everyone's shocked, but the fact that we had just had him here, and then, I think it was less than 48 hours later, that the news came out. So I just put it out for people that don't know. So it could be emotional, but we, you know, we wanted to do the proclamation, and the thing we need to think about now is appreciating and thanking people when they're here, you know, as a board, because we have a lot of great people that we deal with and that serve the community. And it's pretty sad when we have to honor and talk about them when they're gone. So sorry if I went on too long there.
No, thank you for the time to talk about my friend. We all, and Sergeant Neal's over here, we could all stand here and talk for a very long time about Judge Smith's stories, so I'll try not to go too long. But my stories, I met Judge Smith when I went to the police academy in 1997 as a pre-service cadet. So I hadn't been hired by a police department. I paid the bill myself and put myself through the police academy. And Judge Smith was a PT instructor in 1997, and up until, like, he was still a PT instructor. Like you said, he was a specimen, a physical specimen. But I remember the first day of our PT instruction, we were all sitting in the gym and waiting to be, you know, harassed by the PT instructors, and Judge Smith noticed my running shoes. He, you know, being an athlete, he thought that my shoes were nice, so he made a comment about my shoes, and I thought, "I'm in, I'm gonna be okay, they're not gonna beat me up too bad." But he also made fun of my glasses that I had at the time, so I picked up the nickname Private Joker from a movie that people have probably seen. But he referred to me as Private Joker the whole way through the academy. Then to be hired by Swatara Township in 1998 and find that I would be working with the guy that, you know, beat me up running around HAC's Police Academy was just a dream come true. And he was an amazing man, a great friend, really good detective for Swatara Township. It was sad and happy, it was like bittersweet when he was retiring, but we knew that he was going on to become the district judge that we would all be working with. And I have so many judge stories, I won't talk about all of those, but Judge Smith on the bench was completely fair to both sides. And when, now I'm gonna get emotional. When the police were presenting cases, or the prosecution, the DA's office, although Mike was a former police officer and strongly supported the police department, when we messed something up, he held us accountable. And I really respected that about him. So he was an amazing man, he was a better friend than I think a lot of us have ever had. But the last night that he was here with us swearing in Bain, right before the meeting, in true Judge Smith comedic form, he was complaining to me about having to swear in a dog. He thought, he loved being here, but he thought that was hilarious. So it was nice being able to spend time with him Wednesday night. And while I'm here, I wanna give a shout out to Lieutenant Krailing especially, but a lot of other people in our police department that have been working with Judge Smith's daughter to help her with the arrangements and make sure that, you know, she's not alone as she's going through this. So our folks have been working very hard to make sure that that is done the right way. Also wanna thank our surrounding police departments who've all been reaching out and offering all the assistance that you can think of while we're all going through this. So thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
As far as Commissioner's remarks, if you wanna start with Commissioner Tuckey, then we'll work our way down.
Yeah, it's definitely a huge loss for our community. Judge Smith is a terrific guy, and I got to know him over the past few years a little bit more, and I appreciate everything he stood for. I mean, he was totally, just outright decent person. And just shows you how short life really is. I mean, like you said, he was here Wednesday night last week, and unfortunately, he's not with us now. But knowing that he's in a much better place than, at least that's my belief. I've been praying for his family and his friends, and like I said, it's a huge loss for our community. And I just, like I said, keep praying for all involved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Steele.
Yeah, I've actually met Judge Smith because I'm a kid growing up in Overland, and I remember him from the police force and the interactions with him. This is a honorable man, humble, kind, caring. I think, I think the loss, the biggest loss is also to the justice system because of his fairness and people that came before him on the bench. He's always been compassionate, honest, and the unique thing is, I think, anyone that has gotten sworn in in this room has been sworn in by Judge Smith. And that goes for, I guess, every single police officer since he's retired here as well. So I mean, I think he plays a near dear piece, a heart of Swatara Township and the community here. When you look at the mentions and the accolades that this guy's getting online, I think it speaks to the character and the way he lived his life. There are so many outpouring members of the community that are stepping up to support him. We watched the parade by here as his body went from the funeral home, excuse me, from the coroner's to the funeral home, and the procession. I mean, you had almost every surrounding police department around us, and it goes to show that this gentleman's funeral is not gonna be held at just a small church or something, that it has to be a big forum, that he touched that many people's lives. And I think we should always allow that memory to live on and continue to speak on his behalf. So it's easy to hear that proclamation and that gentleman's name. I don't think you'll find one person in this world that will say a bad thing about him. So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna offer my condolences to his family, as well as our police department, and anyone that knew him, called him a friend. I had the opportunity to get to know him a little bit through interactions here with the town gym and with swearing ins, and I believe he did the Tour de Belt the year that I, I only did it once. Not, I'm not a biker, so I'm happy that I completed it, but that was a one and done. I know he rode that year as well, so it is a tremendous loss for Swatara Township and surrounding communities, and I just, I just wish everyone well, and I hope that your memories offer some solace and some comfort during this difficult time. Thank you.
In 1986, I was working loss prevention at Hess's Department Store, and I had a lot of interaction with the police officers. And that same year, I graduated from HAC's Police Administration program, and I thought I was headed for a career in law enforcement, and it was Mike Smith that encouraged me to apply here in Swatara Township. At that time, I lived in the city of Harrisburg, and my thoughts were Harrisburg Police Department or the state police. Ended up working for two state agencies and retiring, but I stayed on as that loss prevention specialist at Hess's, was able to do some work in the mall, and worked with J.C. Penney's and John Watermakers back then. And unfortunately, in one aspect of that role, I would catch a lot of shoplifters. For the most part, you didn't have the electronic surveillance and cameras and things like that. You had to see the person, and they stole, and then you had to physically retrieve them and return them. And that was something that, if you looked at Mike Smith, he looked like a businessman. But I'll tell you this, he was all business. He was in incredible shape even then, and many times, he would respond, or we worked together with bigger rings, like retail theft rings that were hitting stores and things like that. And he was always a true professional. We worked together for five years in that role. And many times, we went to the district magistrate. It was Mary Cross early on, and then it was Bob Yannick. So I would go to court with a Swatara officer or detective, and many times, it was Mike. And we just told the truth. Like, there was not, you know, there was nothing, if you didn't see something here that we never added charges, he basically was, as the police officer, as fair as, you know, what we're hearing as the judge, too. And sometimes, there would be charges that, you know, maybe, we never added anything, but we would give in and compromise. And then years later, when he was in the role, on occasion, I went down to see him conduct business in his court, sometimes lobbying for a certain decision based on the township. And as Superintendent Stouffer said, extremely fair person to everybody in there. And at the same time, if somebody was chirping from the back or showed attitude, he was firm. You know, he wanted the respect in the courtroom, and he also didn't like disrespect towards witnesses or the law enforcement that was in there. But in this role, probably a month didn't go by that I didn't see him somewhere, whether he was at Hershey Bears Hockey, if he was playing hockey, he was out in the community. He certainly rode his bike everywhere, and as President Ellis said, she did the 20-mile loop once. I think he did that for a snack before breakfast. I mean, the guy was just, you know, he talked about the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of these miles that he put on the bike, and I'm not a biker, and that was just absolutely incredible, that the van was basically like a machine. But to his family and friends, I know there's a lot of people grieving, a lot of broken hearts. Everyone has their time, and in his case, it didn't seem like he would have his time when, you know, anytime soon. He just was absolutely physically fit. I remember sometimes catching him with like a knee brace or leaning to the side and talking about how he was recovering from an injury and he was compensating, but never knew him to have a health issue or anything like that. So it's a tremendous loss for the community, and I know he touched many lives. I was fortunate enough to see the procession from the coroner's office to the funeral home, and I think there were 30, 30 police cars in there. And the way his district was set up, Swatara Township would be the largest population, but he did cover areas across the boundaries. And tremendous show of support specifically from Swatara, but even the school district, which has its own police department, had cars to show his respect, or to show their respects. And his, I won't, I might misquote it, but their, his arrangements are public now, coming up here on Friday and Saturday. And I, along with many people, will happily go and say goodbye to a dear friend. Thank you.
Commissioner Steele.
I mean, following everybody, I think it's almost unfair for me, you know, because everybody had such amazing things to say about Judge Smith, and I considered him a dear friend, you know. Ever since I was young, I mean, I've known him, and I had the privilege of working his first campaign for Magisterial District Judge. And I can say from those experiences and all of my experiences throughout the years knowing him, he, I've never seen him unhappy to be at an event. He might have quipped a little bit here and there about complaining, you know, just to see what your reaction's gonna be, but he was always happy. He was always happy to, he was a true dedicated, committed servant to our community, and I, I value the opportunity I had to know him. And then when I was sworn in for my first time, I remember him standing up there, and I think I put the wrong hand on the Bible, and he's up there directing me, telling me how you're supposed to do it. And, and he stopped for a minute, and he looked out to the audience, and he said, you know, he referenced that I had worked his campaign, and now he got to swear me, swear me in. So it was really quite an honor. I think, I think he's gonna... My thoughts and prayers are with all of you and his extended family here in Swatara Township and the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go on to item 6B. We have another proclamation for Kenneth G. and Marie J. McLean.
So tonight, we are going to honor Lori and Ken. And for anyone that knows Ken and Lori, or even knows them, of them, these two individuals, and Ken has passed away now, but I would always say they're a force to be reckoned with. And the type of force that they're to be reckoned with is a force for social quality, for justice, and above all, for kindness. Sometimes in public service, the weight of decision-making is heavy, either through legislation or policy, and sometimes governance. It's not easy, but I can say this, honoring the legacy of Ken and honoring Lori, this is easy. This is, this is very easy for all of us up here. And as we embark on the anniversary of Ken's untimely passing, we choose to do what they would always do, and that is lead with compassion. Today, we carry forward their legacy with an act of kindness, particularly their involvement in the Chambers Point community, with the Bootneys community, and how they champion fiercely. And I mean, that's why I said they are a force to be reckoned with. In times when others, you know, turn them away, Ken and Lori stood up. They ensured fairness in our community, dignity, and belonging. So through their dedication, they helped unite a fractured community, which was the Chambers Point community. And so it's with deep gratitude and love that we honor them today by dedicating Chambers Point Park and their names. May it always be a space for justice, inclusion, and kindness, and may that live on. Now I'm gonna read a proclamation on behalf of the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners recognizes the extraordinary contributions of individuals whose lives exemplify compassion, stewardship, and a lifelong dedication to community. And whereas Ken and Lori's journey began through a serpentipitous encounter in Queens Village, New York, where their early connection through church and mutual respect blossomed into a love story rooted in friendship, music, and faith. Their marriage in 1966 marked the beginning of a steadfast partnership grounded in open communication, shared values, and unwavering support for one another and their family. Whereas throughout the lives of Ken and Lori demonstrate a commitment to justice, equality, and civic engagement. From their youth in culturally rich neighborhoods to their active roles as community members in Pennsylvania, they embodied the principle that every individual deserves dignity and respect. Whether through quiet acts of service, of passionate advocacy, their voices uplifted those in need and fostered unity among neighbors. Their devotion to the natural world was equally profound, expressed not in grand gestures, but in daily choices to live responsibly, nurture the land, and pass on a reverence for the environment to future generations. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners hereby dedicates Chambers Point Park in honor of Ken and Lori, whose enduring love for nature, community, and each other's service as a guiding light for all. May this park stand not only as a place of beauty and recreation, but as a living tribute to two souls who every action inspired a ripple of kindness, whose legacy is rooted in sustainability and compassion, and whose presence in Swatara Township enriched the lives of all those who came to know them. It is witness wherefore, we, the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners, have hereunto set our hands and cause this proclamation to be executed on this day, the ninth day of July 2025. If you wanna come up, you wanna, you wanna say anything, Lori?
I'm not sure I need this. I do talk loud. I was 22 years old when Ken and I married, and I have been so lost for this past year. He was suffering from Alzheimer's, but when something occurred, he was in the hospital, and they found a brain tumor. So although he was still gardening, still attending a meeting here and there, he was a member of the Lancaster Postcard Club, and he was president of the York Club. And again, it's preserving antique things and enjoying, enjoying the past as well as the present. He was very aware of the environment, and you know what I had to put in cans so he could put it in a compost pile before composting was ever really, you know, popular. He loved gardening, and he really tried to take care of our property very well. He put in plants that would last here, except I think this drought that we had the last couple of summers and the heat hurt some of the things. He, he enjoyed the idea of being retired, because this man had so many hobbies. He was an artist. When we had the celebration of life, people came to the Wiedemann Funeral Home, and that room looked like an art gallery. It was his large paintings, some of them, that we could never have brought them all. We would have needed the Guggenheim or something. But there were his postcards. But there were his postcards, there was his calligraphy. There was all these different kinds of things. He did some natural paintings, but also abstracts. And one of the postcards that we chose was called "A Ship in a Storm." And that's kind of what it was for him as he was passing away. We were very lucky that he did not want to stay in the hospital. And so we set up our family room, our sunroom, as his place. And the four of us were together, the girls, Michelle, my daughter Jennifer lives in Delaware and couldn't make it. She's on a business trip in Virginia, and our granddaughter from Pittsburgh. And he was still aware of doing things, watch out for each other. We talked about the fact that we purposely moved to a neighborhood that was full of diversity. Because just living in a lily-white area does not teach you anything about culture. And there are more people in this world that have diverse ideas. And we believed that no matter what our own religious feelings and spiritual feelings might be, we had a right to them. And someone else who believes differently has a right also. But nobody has the right to push their feelings on someone else and make them go along. And my husband deeply believed in that, as well as myself. We were all married a little over 57 years. So being 80 when he passed away is a long time that we set up a partnership. And that's what marriage is. We had six years together before children. And that partnership was one of respect and learning each other. And whatever faults he had, I put up with. And whatever faults, which were probably many, he put up with with me, too, including talking too much. As a matter of fact, I'd like to end this with them. The day that he was going to pass away, I had been out on our screened-in porch, and I was calling different people to let them know that the time was nigh. We had hospice, and they told us it was going to be within days. When I finally got done on the phone, I came into the sunroom, and the three girls were around the bed. They were very, very somber. I could tell something was wrong. But I walked to him, and because of the way I came in, I was behind his head. And I told him, I said, "I was just talking with your cousin, and she sends her love." And I gave him a kiss, and he made his last peaceful sigh. After that, when we talked about it, we started to laugh, because I've always been on the phone for a long time, even when she lives around the corner, and we're on the phone for an hour or so. So the girls decided that the reason he didn't pass away was out on the porch. He was waiting for me to get off the damn phone. Thank you very much for this honor. I wish he knew. Maybe he does know that you've done this for him. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
We're gonna take some pictures now.
We're gonna do the commissioners first. One with one... Hey, you can even open that. The sound will be... We're gonna slide these out. Then we can do family friends, and then we can put this shit out. Family friends out. You know who your family and friends are. So you can drag them up, call them up.
Michelle is my older daughter. Friends, Chris and Linda. And Michelle.
We're gonna be the interesting friends, and then we're gonna step out. You guys hold that spot. We'll come around you.
Patty and I, men in rehab.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I told her we should have queued her up the same.
We'll have you back next month for the singing portion. How's that?
Anybody missing glasses? I probably need them. There you go.
I can't take her anywhere.
What about a hundred dollar bill? Give me a hundred dollar bill.
Yeah, we'll be good. There's six of us. We'll figure it out. That's not all we were here.
Thanks for keeping the secret, Michelle.
All right, we are up to item seven, visitors' requests and comments. If you come forward, please state your name and address, as well as write it down for the record. And then you may begin.
Good evening, Mary Claus, 447 Pritchard Court in Chambers Hill. I'm with the Chambers Hill Fire Company, where I'm the president, a firefighter, and an emergency medical technician. It has come to my attention that the Board of Commissioners, or at least that the township is planning to stop funding the Chambers Hill Fire Company. And I would request that if this is going to be done, that the board discuss it as a board, not just the one commissioner, Tom Conley, that's the head of the Public Safety Committee, and that the board discuss it and take a vote on it. I just think that would be the way to do it. We also, in preparation, if this does happen, have been requesting a copy of the actual bill so that we can plan some budgeting. We'd like to have a copy. And I will give to President Ellis a copy of what we're requesting from 2024, so we know usages of water, sewer, stormwater, trash, and recycling, et cetera, so that we can plan some budgeting. I will say that for 71 years, the Chambers Hill Fire Company has served this township with dignity, with service, and with love. And we're having tough times now as fire companies, not just in our township or county or state, but our whole nation is having trouble with volunteers. And that's nothing new. You have heard about this before. And when the township came to us with a memorandum of understanding, written by your attorney without input from the fire company, to lease the upstairs of our fire company and have total control of it, and have non-members not be coming in, our company discussed it in great detail. That memorandum didn't include any guarantee of any funding, rather not funding of any personnel there or of any apparatus there. It just did say about total control. We discussed this at a company meeting of the whole membership, and at a board meeting of all the board members before we had it, just to discuss the principle of it. Then when we got the actual memorandum of understanding, I made copies, and we reviewed them, and we discussed it two more times. It was not a decision enter lightly. And if you are going to not fund us, I simply ask that it be done as a group decision, not as one commissioner. No disrespect, but you're not a king or a dictator. It should be done in an open and democratic way of making a vote. So that's what I would ask for. And I have the questions here that I will give to the president. I have talked with the finance director, who's been very nice. I know she's on vacation this week, and I know it's been a couple of weeks. But we do need to know what those are so we can plan and make contacts ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, thank you.
Pepper Knows, 6080 Harker Drive, Harrisburg, PA. Bill Farling was supposed to be here today and speak before me, but I did it in case he didn't. Our Swatara Township fire tax was established in 1992 to fundraise for fire equipment and apparatus so that our local fire companies could focus on fighting fires instead of fundraising. Later, this money was then used to help pay firehouse bills and salaries. Approximately $30,000 was put toward each of the firehouses, and all they had to do was submit the bills to be reimbursed by the township. I had a friend calculate the current tax rate, because you always talk in Mills and everything, and I'm told that it calculates to about 25%. We also pay a fire prevention tax funded by our real estate taxes and a state foreign fire insurance tax that the state distributes to the municipalities to distribute to our local volunteer firefighters' relief associations. Ebberson was originally hired to manage five firehouses and all the firemen, everything that goes with it. We are now down to two fully functional firehouses, Rutherford and Swatara in Oberlin. Thirteen of the 15 Bressler firemen are no longer running for Swatara Township. And only three or four of the six to seven active members, not counting some junior members or some retired members of Lawton Fire Company, are running for Swatara Township. You say in one breath, "We need volunteers." But yet last year, Chambers Hill had 15 people fill out and submit the Volunteer Fireman Interest Form to run for Chambers Hill to Chief Ebberson, who never hired a single one of them, and seems to me to be turning away any volunteers, even highly qualified ones like Mike Farling, who over four years ago was involved in a bitter divorce where false allegations were made. He was investigated by Police Chief Ryder. No arrest was made, and no charges were made. At last week's Chambers Hill Town Hall, Andy Moyer let it slip that Mike was permanently suspended. We are getting the runaround. When we asked the fire board about reinstating him, they say it's a responsibility of township commissioners to decide. When we asked the township commissioners, Conley or Steele tell us that it's up to the fire board to decide. I'll get that later. At this last town hall, Andy Moyer said that the police chief is the one who will not let Bill Farley run in Swatara Township. Chief Stoffer, is that right? Okay. I was going to ask if it was right, but your reasons. It now seems that we are misspending the money by giving our failed fire chief a 32% raise when he has less buildings to manage, less volunteers to manage. He's never done any fire inspections that was included as his duties when he was hired, but has now transferred this duty of inspections to one of his chiefs. He now wants us to hire a fire coordinator at $52,000 per year to take away more of his duties, which is the hiring and managing of the firemen and doing his fire marshal duties. What are we paying him to do? It doesn't look like he does much work, except fudge numbers. Yes, we have seven paid part-time firemen. But on any given day, when we do not have enough men to even get a truck out of one of our two remaining firehouses, they close the firehouse for the day, which leaves us with one fully functional firehouse for all of Swatara Township on any given day. You never know which day. This is unsatisfactory. Also, this tax money is being used for unnecessary things like repainting our Tahos and removing anything that identifies them as Swatara Township Tahos so that people don't know when they're being used for shopping at PetSmart or being used for the commission of a crime at Bass Pro. Yes, I think that only Tahos, if any, are necessary for use in Swatara Township. The battalion chiefs and lieutenants who are using the remaining five Tahos should be manning the fire trucks to get them out instead of showing up in Tahos. Why are we paying for three battalion chiefs, four assistant chiefs, two lieutenants, a captain, when we only have two firehouses? And Conley's agenda is to get us down to one firehouse with a fully paid staff that we cannot afford. We're already top-heavy with more officers than normal, and Ebberson has told a friend that he wants to hire more chiefs. Since it seems that you are, one, not using my Swatara tax funds for what they were created; two, you closed Lawton and Bressler, you stopped paying their bills for them; three, Ebberson said that as of July 1st, they were going to stop paying Chambers Hill's bills, as even a couple months ago, they haven't paid for some of those bills. But you're going to continue to cover the insurance until they get their own coverage. Two years ago, you took all of Chambers Hill Fire Company's township-owned fire equipment and apparatuses, even though they still have firemen attending classes and showing up to fight fires in our utility truck or privately-owned vehicles. You're now forcing my local fire company, Chambers Hill, to fundraise to pay their bills, all because they refused to turn control of their building over to you. Last year, you quickly sold a tarot truck under appraised value and had a great loss to those taxpayers. And the buyer sold it at true value of over $1 million. You also looked into selling the Bressler fire truck, but stopped when we found out and confronted you guys at the meeting. It is currently still stored at a landfill compost instead of letting Chambers Hill Fire Company use it. I'm drafting a letter to go out to the Swatara Township residents, and I want to canvass Swatara Township to get enough signatures to get a referendum put on the November ballot for the citizens of Swatara Township to vote if we want the fire tax abolished or not. I'm tired of this crap. I'm tired of this crap. Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time?
I'll try not to rag a finger at you. Hi, Commissioners. Good evening. My name is Ed Hyam at 710 Winding Lane. I'm being told that Lieutenant David Milstein has concluded his traffic study of Quater Lane. I am told that this report is before the Board of Commissioners for consideration or approval. The traffic study was to review the effects of commercial truck parking on Quater Lane relating to safety issues. I was told that Lieutenant Milstein has concluded that it would be his recommendation that Quater Lane be a non-parking area for commercial vehicles. I would like to fully endorse that conclusion. If done, this will make Quater Lane safe once again for residential and commercial traffic. Snow plowing can be done as intended. This will also bring back an aesthetic to Winding Oaks Townhouse community that the homeowners won't have to look out from their decks or windows to see a truck parking lot. This will also help the residents to retain their property values by not having truck parking on Quater Lane. I would like to conclude to say thank you to Lieutenant Milstein and ask the Board to vote yes in banning commercial trucking parking on Quater Lane.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Whipple. I reside at 78 Oakleaf Lane and have done so since 2008, owning the property. I'm here just to second what Ed just told you. I've been working with the lieutenant, providing information and so forth. And the parking issue, also on the Board of the HOA, that has become a serious issue in the past six months. Especially, there's been parking there for several years. But in the past, it's usually just been a resident, one individual or something like that. Now, a lot of non-residents are parking there, and it's caused a lot of issues with those people using that road, accessing it, especially. I'm more concerned when Christmas tree shop is repopulated with a new tenant. Hopefully, that will happen in the very near future, that that will become an even bigger issue there because of the access on the road. So I would encourage you to support restricting commercial parking on Quater Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shu Javia. I also reside in the same community as my two of the previous colleagues, as I said. Our biggest fear is, A, not just the residential value, but when the winter comes in, the lane, Quater Lane, is already a little bit sterile. So whenever the snowplow will be done, I'm not sure how we're going to be able to get by, because back in the day, there was only one trucker that used to park there. But now, just before I came in, I took a video, and there were 13 trucks right now. On the spot, 13. I just took a video right before I came in up here. If you like it, I can show it to you. What these people are doing during the daytime, they will leave their personal car or SUV, take the trucker, and then in the evening time, leave the trucks up here and then take it back there, wise. There is a solid yellow line. We are forced to break it. And as I said, right now, we can do it. But what happens when the winter comes in? So I please request you to take this seriously, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item eight, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're up to motion to approve items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are up to reports. For the Treasurer's Report.
Motion to table.
A motion to table and a second. What I was going to suggest is that we just approve it, and it'll be posted.
Resign.
Yeah, but if... Farley is going to make Brittany do two next month.
I'm going to make her do two. We can review it.
You say that again?
I would make a motion that we review and post it and prove it this evening, and then she can give an update next month.
Sounds good. All right. So I'll second that motion. It's to review. When you say review this evening or just have her recap?
Recap.
Yep, okay. So we'll review it next month, but we will approve it, and it will be posted. And then that way, too, the public has the opportunity to inspect it rather than waiting until next month.
Correct.
Do we have any further discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we'll just get an overview of that next month. We're up to 10B Solicitor's Report. Solicitor Kokoryzy, do you have anything to report to the Board?
I do not, though. I'll have a couple of comments on some items later on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We are up to 10C Fire Services and EMS Report.
Good evening, Commissioners, Members of the public. I present to you the June 2025 Swedair Fire Rescue Report. We responded to 135 emergencies, including two calls in Paxton Borough. These included six fires, 32 medical responses, 12 hazardous conditions, 19 service calls, 21 good and ten calls, 36 false alarms. And just to put some things in perspective, that brings us up to 727 calls for service in 2025. We had 69 active members put in a combined 4,472 hours of staffing this month, and we had 654 hours of training to make sure everybody is staying up on their skills. On average, our response time was 5 minutes and 58 seconds. We provided mutual aid 25 times and received mutual aid 30 times. Outside emergency calls, our firefighters stayed active in the community. We checked and installed smoke detectors, two smoke detectors, participated in the township movie night, Swedair Township Police Youth Camp, station tours, attended two funeral details, supported two pop-up community barbecues. We assisted with a flag retirement ceremony at the 48 Club, and we took part in the Midland Cemetery Tour. That includes June's report. Are there any questions on the report?
Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right.
I'd ask, can I have a few minutes to speak? And just please let me speak. Give me time. And actually, I'd like Mary to come up here as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
You cannot like me. That's fine. You can not agree with what we're doing here. But one thing you're not going to do is question my integrity. Was there ever 15 applications that got turned away, Mary?
Not that I'm aware of.
Correct. How many meetings did we sit in together? And that was our primary focus, to get applications, to get people to run at the Chambers Hill Fire Company. And it came to a point where, a year later, we were not getting anyone, to the point where Chambers Hill asked to at least keep a utility in service. That is where we were at. It is not Chambers Hill's fault. It is not the Board of Commissioners's fault. It's not my fault. It is no one's fault. It is hard to find volunteers. We had a lot of positive meetings, and we had a lot of hope. You know, we want to talk about the PIP. The... Sorry, I'm hearing the echo, and it's really... I don't know where it's coming from, but... The backside of the PIP included staffing the station with a number of people for certain hours. And that was kind of the focus at one of our first meetings. And the concern was it was not obtainable. So we said, okay, well, we can revisit that later, and we're just going to focus on the first part. And the first part was to get new members. We had a couple of people say they were going to run there. We had a couple of people fill out applications and then never followed up. And we ended up with two at one point, and then down to Greg Miller, who was returning to try and help out. So basically, it's Mary and Greg. That is it. And we cannot effectively run an active fire department with two people. And Mary knows that, and Greg knows that. So I ask that you please stop pointing fingers at anybody. This started a few years ago, okay? And it was, again, we're not going to talk about what happened. It doesn't matter. It happened. But we're past that, and we're trying to move forward. As far as the fire service as a whole goes, you heard, we had 69 active members this month. That's good. It is. Now, it's still not enough, okay? We... Let's talk about what we do that kind of gets us to that number and helps us get people here. We have an incentive program that... I wish I would have had the paperwork with me, but at the Fire Board meeting, if you go back and watch it, I read how much we pay a month for fire incentive. And the numbers are through the roof. And you know why they're through the roof? Because it's working. When new people come in to get to that incentive, they have to get their training and get firefighter one. And everybody wants to do that so they get paid. And then, once they get paid that, they want to get to the firefighter two. They can make $1,100 a month, which is outstanding. And to show that, just a few numbers on how that program has worked in 2019, we had seven firefighter twos in Swedair Township. In 2025, we now have 27, with, I believe, there's three more that are in the pipeline to get it. And that does not include our career staffing. On top of that 27 number, we have 10 additional firefighter ones. We are doing a lot of good things. We do a lot of things for our volunteers. The incentive program is just one of them. We were the first fire department in this area to provide NFPA physicals for our firefighters. If that doesn't show that we care, I don't know what else does, because we had people that found out they had small health problems that didn't become big ones. And guess what? There's still active firefighters with us. We provide the best employee assistance program for our firefighters, not only just the volunteer firefighters, but their families. Their families can get access to these benefits. Nobody else has that. And it's so good, we are trying to replicate that with the county commissioners at a county level to make that available for every firefighter in Dolphin County. They're taking our program and looking at it. So we are doing a lot of good things. I wasn't really prepared to go down this road tonight, so I don't have a lot of the stuff I had with the Fire Board meeting, but there was a lot more positive information, I think, that was shared at the Fire Board meeting. But I'll just end it with, just stop pointing fingers, whether it's at me or a firehouse or department or... I mean, not only do I take a lot of the heat, I can tell you some of the conversations that Mary Klaus and some of the, I'm just going to call it abuse, that she has taken from people blaming her for this problem, is absolutely absurd, and it has got to stop. It's got to stop. We're doing the best we can. And yes, are there days that we have fire stations out of service? Absolutely, there is. But you know what? I talk to Susplowhanna Township and Lower Paxton on a daily basis. We have a group text, and we say, "What's your staffing?" And we try and move our staffing around, and they try and move their staffing around, so at least there's coverage in certain areas. It happens. It happens on a daily basis. There's no way around it. The benefit now is, we have a program that started in January. We started with a new reporting software. The good thing is, we know when that's going to happen. So we can take things out of service, so we're not waiting six to eight minutes till it gets replaced so a fire truck gets dispatched. And we can share that information with our partners as they share it with us. So we have a better view of the fire service than we have ever had before. I don't really know what else to say except for just stop the negativity. Everybody's just got to stop. It doesn't help. I mean, I'm sitting there, my phone is going off buzzing, and it's our active firefighters. Our active firefighters sit and they watch this, week after week after week after week. It's always something with the fire department. We are doing the absolute best we can. And again...
I have a question, Madam President. What is for that?
No, go ahead.
I have a question. Yeah, so when you say people are placing blame or abusing Mary, where does that blame coming from?
I'm not going to share the individual's name.
Okay. I have another question in regards to disciplinary action. So is there a policy on disciplinary action for firefighters if they step out online on the fire scene or if there's any issues on a fire scene?
Yes.
Okay, so what is your policy on that? Do you have a copy of a policy you can share with me?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been made aware, and I'm sure you're aware, of an incident on one of the fire scenes where another firefighter verbally abused another firefighter. No, I'm not naming names, so it's not a personnel issue. I would like to know what the policy is on that, and I would like you, at some point, to update me on what disciplinary action's been taken.
I just... Can I say one thing? Would you be satisfied with discussing that offline?
I would be satisfied if he would get back to me tomorrow and provide me with how the incident was handled and what the policy is in general, because as Commissioner Steele, as you have known for quite a while now, I've been asking questions and discussing if there's a uniform manner in which we've been addressing fire incidents, especially since the Lawton thing and the Bressler thing and things that have happened. I would just like to know, it would give me peace of mind, to know that if there are incidents that arise, what is the policy in place for handling those incidents? Are we being uniform in our disciplinary action? Or is one person getting treatment and another person isn't? I don't really think that... I think that it should be uniform and fair, and everybody should know that if you do something, there's going to be disciplinary action that you're looking at if you get caught doing something, because I can tell you, it's not good for morale. And that's been my concern, and I'm not criticizing. When I ask questions, it's because you're the chief. I'm not... I think the word last week was used, "targeting." No, if you are in charge of a department and you are the chief, that is not targeting. That is addressing concerns regarding the fire service with the person supposed to be answering those questions. So I just wanted to put it out there that it's not personal. It's not targeting. It's because we're sitting here, and our responsibility as commissioners is to ask questions. And sometimes they might be tough. Sometimes they might be softballs. And if you don't have the answer, just say you'll come back to me. But for anybody out there that thinks that this is a personal attack... No, it's... We can all... Sometimes we agree on things. Sometimes we don't agree. Sometimes there's a way that things are being handled that I don't necessarily think is right. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes money is placed in certain things that I don't think should be a priority. And sometimes, you know... So we have disagreements. But I will never stop asking the hard questions, because that's what the residents, and I think that's what you, as a resident, should expect. Somebody has to ask the questions.
I, I have something for Mary and then maybe we can continue this, so Mary could sit down, is that okay? If I, um, Mary Klaus came into a public meeting June twelfth last year and asked if I was willing to work to try to get Chambers Hill up and running and get volunteers. And we worked for a whole year to do that. Um, the starting point, June twelfth, was thirty months after Chambers Hill was taken off the box. So it'd have been two and a half years and Mary asked if we could work together. And I ran a report, well, Chief Emerson ran a report, but I, I had a question. You know, if they're still responding, because Mary had pointed out that they still were able to respond, they just weren't on the box. Um, and we found out that in a ninety-day period of time, that there were three hundred hours credited for um response, training, physical fitness, all, all the things that you want your firefighters to do. And Mary Klaus accounted for about eighty-nine percent of that time herself. One individual person, there were a total of four responders. And at the time, um, one of the, someone in the audience and someone on the board said, can we get the same numbers for Rutherford because Rutherford's hurting for responders too? So over the same period of time, Rutherford had twenty-two responders and um about eleven or twelve of those had more hours than Mary over the two hundred and sixty-five hours. So we weren't comparing the same thing. Rutherford was getting out, but, but could have used more people. That's incredible. And Mary has done an incredible job on her own, basically, for a couple of years to try to keep that fire station open because it's in her heart. I don't want to say what's in my mind or anybody else's mind, but it doesn't stack up to good decision-making to keep the fire station open with Mary putting in ninety percent of the time there by herself. I'm not critical of anybody who was a firefighter there because some of them have gone on to be paid firefighters professionally, some have gone on to be paid police officers, some had families, some moved out of the area, some had health issues, some passed away. But there wasn't fifteen active firefighters, there were four at the time, and I'm not gonna name the other three. And they, they did what they could, but Mary for, for a ninety-day window. And I'm sure if I would have went for the whole thirty months, it probably would have been the same percentage. But then Mary and a person she designated to speak on her behalf as a chief came to me. Um, that was the beginning of the PIP. The PIP is just a performance improvement plan. So Mary and, and one of her um firefighters came with a plan and we worked that into a bigger plan. And at the end of it, the first requirement was that Chambers Hill would have enough people to respond to twenty percent, twenty percent of the fire calls in, in their area and, and, and their um community. That, that wasn't really demanding. And we heard that this person was gonna do it and people came to the microphone and people said they were gonna do it and people submitted applications and then they didn't do the background checks. So I'm not saying that, that people didn't express that they were going to step up for Mary and Chambers Hill and Swatara Fire Rescue. But at the end of it, um, we thought we had two. And if what I heard tonight is, um, we really only have one of, of the two. And he's an incredible man too. He's somebody who had served in the fire service in Chambers Hill for years and years and decided to come back and help. And there's always going to be a place for, for Mary and Greg Miller, the people that are in Swatara Fire Rescue.
There's more than one person, Greg Miller's not their only firefighter. Mary.
He was the only person from June twelfth for one year who.
Well, that's not what I was told, Mary, you had a list, you told me that you had a list. Did you have a list of firefighters?
We did, we did, we had a meeting with eleven or twelve people firmly committed and they promised they would run. We have done everything we can do to get people to run. I've had tea parties at my house to invite people. We got town hall meetings, we talked to them at fish dinners, at chicken barbecues, one-on-ones. We've had people come and visit. We can't make people do things, I can only make Mary do things.
But I think it's a little disingenuous of people up here to sit here when I was told that there was a list and you just acknowledged that there was a list of eleven or twelve, to sit there and say that there's only one firefighter.
Well, right now, can I say?
There could have been a list of a hundred, one person completed the process.
Let's let Mary clarify the question that you asked.
You are very good at manipulating the public into thinking that there was only one firefighter for the last five months. And all I'm asking for is a little bit of honesty.
We, all those people that they didn't follow through was the thing. But let me say this, Greg Miller, myself and a young man who's in his early twenties have been stand, have been going to the firehouse on standbys every single week, except when I was out of the country, I wasn't there, um, since January doing standbys. And this young man is ready to start his modules at Harrisburg Gary Community College when they start up. He has a mentor within the fire service approved of by Mike Emerson. And so we have at least three of us coming on board and we have some other, hopefully, prospects, but I can't make people do things. We want to be on the team, we don't have to be the quarterback, we just want to be a member of the team. We're working on some other things. When Fire Prevention Week comes, month actually, in October, we are real active during fire prevention. And I've been working all summer on plans to do specialized fire prevention classes for people that are hard of hearing, might be blind, may need low sensory, may have mental disabilities. So we have some specialized things that we can do too. We want to stay as part of the team, Chambers Hill Fire Company is very committed. And we want to have apparatus in our station and we want to be able to get it out. That's never been a secret. And whether you, after you have a discussion and vote, whether you continue to fund us or whether you don't, whether you support us or whether you don't, we support you and we support Swatara Township. We love our Chambers Hill, we love our township and we are firmly committed to taking care of it. And we love um the people in this township. So we just want you to remember that. We're not bad people because we didn't want to do the memorandum of understanding. We're not bad people. Sometimes things work out and sometimes they don't. And we did try for over a year, we had meetings. We had um, we had a commissioner, we had the fire chief, we had two civilians and we had people from the fire company. And in the end, it all didn't work out. The performance improvement plan was based on step one, and we never got to the rest of the steps, of getting enough people. And it's a problem that's, you, you can agree is universal of getting enough people. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would just like to know, how many people in this township are gonna go volunteer for a fire station that doesn't have any apparatus? And it sat up there, we used that station, yeah, of course, the community thought there, oh, there's a fire truck in the station. It was a shell, it didn't have any hose, it didn't have any equipment. You literally took a shell of a piece of equipment and put it, it does now, I, I see you shaking your head, it has it now.
That's not true, none of that's true.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did it have any, was it equipped to run fire calls?
It, it didn't have all the equipment it had when it was in Brester. But it had hose and then we had a work detail and put a couple hundred feet of more hose on to bring it up to standard.
Had it been sitting there before you had a work detail and put?
Maybe a couple of months, maybe a couple of months.
A couple of months, how long it had been sitting there? And I'm asking him questions and I want to know the answers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer the questions.
So yes.
It was ready to go to respond when it was put there. It was perfectly fine, no, no.
After a rescue was wrecked and you needed a rescue at Rutherford Station.
No, it was equipped well before that. When it was, when, when it was placed there, it was equipped to respond as an engine.
Fully equipped?
Yes, absolutely.
So you didn't call a work detail after the rescue?
They called a work de, they, they called a work detail because Fireman's Relief bought new hose and we had to put new hose on it.
Great, that's great. Well, I would like to know though, who is going to go to a fire station that doesn't have a, a truck in it?
The truck was sitting there for how many years?
Not, it, it's been a year, it was sitting there for a year. I would like to know prior to that.
No, the two years prior to that, there was a fire truck sitting there.
No, when did you take the truck? You know what, honestly, you know what, I will put a right-to-know request in for the exact date of the engine.
You don't have to put a right-to-know request in.
Then tell me when the engine was taken out of Chambers Hill Station.
I, I don't know what the exact date was.
Well, I would like the exact date.
I believe it was the beginning of twenty-four, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it was there in twenty-two or twenty-three?
Okay, it was there for two years and we weren't able to get anybody there.
And you took the truck out, took the truck out, you took the truck out.
That was seventeen or eighteen?
And you took the engine out. And I just don't know a whole lot of people that are gonna go on, want to run at a station that doesn't have
When we were trying to get people there, there was, it was there.
For them to be able to run.
It was there.
And I can recall a couple of times when someone wanted to actually take the piece out for training and do things like that and it was denied.
Not true.
It was never denied, Mary?
We, we had to have a approved driver, driver by you, remember?
Yes, a certified engine driver, it was never denied, ever, that is not true.
Well, then I, I would take that back, I was told misinformation and.
In fact, they drove it to Hack to go train with the township one evening. And there was a day where some people left Rutherford that typically staffed there. They wound up in staffed at Chambers Hill and they weren't told they couldn't respond, they could respond to calls.
Two people, um, two people from Brester, the two that returned to the fire service in Swatara Township, a husband and wife, came and stood by at our station a few times and we responded together, we trained together. When they came up, we went over it.
So then you're happy, Mary, is that right?
No.
You're completely satisfied?
No.
Okay.
And I would say to the township that we have an empty, clean bay. You have a piece of fire apparatus sitting down at the compost facility. Whatever works off between us, we would like to have a piece of fire apparatus sitting in our empty bay. And you don't have to sit it down at the township um compost facility. We would welcome it there. I think we've proven it was trustworthy in seventy-one years, that's not gonna change. So we would ask you to consider, and I guess that's really your consideration, about putting a piece of fire apparatus there. And you don't have to put it at the compost facility if you need a place for it.
And, and just to address the compost facility, we have a fire training ground down there.
Yeah.
And the fire truck is at, is there.
I've trained there.
Right, 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 and, and, and it's down there, um, could be used for that and, and has been. And it's in a garage. So like we hear this, it's at the dump, it's at the compost facility, that's where we keep equipment. And we have both a police training facility and a fire training facility. So I, I don't want that to get um, you know, twisted through the public. It's, it's in a good spot for, for, for a fire truck. And I'm not saying that, that that is the decision to be made permanently, so I'm hearing what you're saying, Mary.
Well, with all due respect, I think the best spot for a fire truck is at a firehouse.
Our young man that's going to start the modules, we, we had a work detail and was standing by yesterday. And Greg and I did go on a call yesterday, by the way. But anyway, when he was there, he said, it would be nice if we had a fire engine here. So when I'm learning about how the hose is on here and how this is and that is, I could see it. And I thought he had a valid point.
Um, Vice President, you want, okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just keep it down here, go ahead.
Okay. Look, if you want to fund Chambers Hill Fire Company or if you don't, that's up to the majority of this board, I believe. The thing is, I know that they are on the process of opening it up as fast as they can. They do have people there that are dedicated, that are working towards that goal. I mean, if it ends up being decided that majority of this board doesn't want to fund Chambers Hill Fire Company, doesn't mean that they can't keep growing and keep working towards it. And that piece of equipment should be up there in their firehouse. Because like it was stated by Commissioner Zubek, who wants to go to a firehouse without having any apparatus. And it does not cost this township anymore for having it there at the firehouse or if it's down at the compost facility. So there's no reason why that piece of equipment is not put up there and let them work towards getting more firefighters up there. Um, when it comes to training, I, when you, when you talk since, you're talking about since June of this past year, you worked towards this, they didn't have the equipment up there till it was towards the middle end of October of last year. And there again, like it was stated, people don't want to go to a firehouse without having the equipment there. And this is going to be a process, hopefully, it's allowed by the chief, to where let them build it back up. Please. You have people that are dedicated that want to have that work and make it work. I mean, there was comments in the past made by you that you want two firehouses. That was stated publicly a few times. That's correct, I stand by that. Okay, I don't, as a commissioner up here on this board, I want to see us to be able to have at least three, especially up there. Not because I live in that area, because it's needed for our community. And we need to allow them to have that fire company grow again. And I understand what you're saying, some time went by, I, I get what you're saying. But on the other hand, you have people committed to help. Please let them move forward on trying to make it work. Uh, there was two members that just completed the pump classes, correct, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you have people committed to do training and work towards that goal. I, I mean, unfortunately, what happened with Brester Fire Company last year with that being closed down, and we did have volunteers there to be able to help. I, I just really hope this board allows them to do what they're asking to do. And that Brester's fire engine gets put back up at Chambers Hill Fire Company. So they can start working with it and try to get to the point to where they can be part of the community through the fire end, other than just utility usage. Thank you.
At, at some point, every single meeting, every single Fire Board meeting or any topic that relates around the fire service, whether it's buying a vehicle, adding part-time employees, doing something for the volunteers, we circle back to the same conversation. And we recognize a real problem, we need real solutions, not constantly arguing over the semantics of what is actually transpiring. Now, at some point, the record has to be put straight and this board has to make tough decisions. And the history of what is transpiring here is, for two years, twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a piece of fire, there was a fire truck there and people left. And no more volunteers came. Okay? And then you get into the next year, which is twenty-four, you begin the process of a year where someone's trying to fix the problem with real solutions and conversations begin to take place with the Public Safety Chair, the Fire Board and the company itself. No one up here can deny anything that I just said took place. So we're at a point as the governing body, is what decisions will be made? How long do you allow a fire ser, a fire station to be out of service? Liking it to this, every one of you are gonna go home today and if your electric by PP&amp;L comes on, when you hit the switch, you'll be happy because you paid your bill. If you paid your bill and it doesn't come on, you're gonna have a problem. But in storms, you do understand, sometimes you're gonna go turn that switch on and the electric might not come on. Liking that to the volunteer fire service. Sometimes they're gonna have problems and volunteers aren't gonna be around, the lights aren't gonna come on. But you're, you're not going to accept continuing to pay for a service and the lights don't come on. So we can sit up here and argue all day long, there should be a fire truck there, someone's not going there because there's a fire truck there. I just muted that argument. For two years, there was a fire truck there and there were no additional volunteers. So we're at a point where we need real solutions to real problems. It, it can't be emotional. I get the steep tradition in the fire service and the emotion of it's my community. They're the hubs of communities, the centers of the communities are the fire departments. There are some people out here, I'm sure, that are old enough that would like seven fire departments because there was a fire department in every community. But at some point, we gotta stop the nonsense and the false narrative that's being displayed to the public of what is actually being transpired. This is a three and a half year problem now. So at what point do we say we're going to do something? I'm tired of hearing, all the problems that we know exist, I'm ready for some solutions. As a governing body, we need solutions. And we can say the volunteers, the volunteers, the volunteers. No elected official, no one from the community cannot say that Swatara Township takes better care of their volunteers than any other municipal government in Dolphin County and probably central Pennsylvania, just through the incentive programs that we have. No one up here and no one in central Pennsylvania can say that there is a volunteer, volunteer issue, that they can't get volunteers. So now that we're there, is it really about volunteers or is it about a guaranteed service? We can argue all day long that we want part-timers or the plan is for full-timers. That's called strategic thinking. If we're gonna sit here and think fifty years from now, we're still gonna have the conversation that we need volunteers and we're not strategically thinking that at some point, we're gonna have volunteers, a combination department. and we're not strategically thinking that at some point, we're going to have volunteers, a combination department with part-timers and full-timers. You're doing the the public a disservice. Twenty-seven thousand residents, probably well over that when the, when we have the businesses in service here. And here's what you're saying. When you dial nine-one-one, someone might not show up. Should we have a volunteer police force? I want you to think about what you're, what we're arguing over. Should you have a volunteer EMS? Because we used to have that. The times have changed. And it's okay for you to be steeped in tradition. It's okay for you to have emotions and feelings. But at some point, you have to make smart, practical decisions. And we can come up to this podium, we can get on Facebook, we can have all the meetings that we want to have through the community and say whatever we want. But at the end of the day, what is still the solution three and a half years later? We're still dealing with the same problem. So at some point, we got to fix this. And I am tired that when we get an opportunity to talk about anything that has to do with the fire service, we have to go back to this. If the case, I'll ask you, Madam President, if we need to put this to bed and have a a discussion, maybe a public town hall, maybe a special meeting, but we can't, we we got a govern up here. It is now probably almost nine o'clock. It's eight thirty-five and we're on the fire chief's report and we're arguing and and we're having discussion about the Chambers Hill Fire Company. And every single time we have a topic that relates around fire, if we put on this agenda to buy boots for the volunteers, we're going to talk about Chambers Hill Fire Company. It it's it's every time. It's every single time. And 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 I want to say something about, you you keep bringing up Lawton, you keep bringing up Bressler. Well, let me explain something to you. You both had an opportunity to vote. You abstained. What was your conflict of interest to abstain? If you, if you were so adamantly against it, you would have voted no. You don't abstain. That makes you neutral.
We didn't have all the information.
Then then if you didn't have all the information, like you say, you vote no. But see, voting, not vote, I did, I did not interrupt either one.
If you say it were steeped in tradition, that wasn't a traditional move. That was you closing down a station because of an accusation.
One of you. I did not. I did not either. And I and I and I will not. And I ask that you give me that same respect.
By all means, no, I'd like to speak after that, Madam President.
A a fire department being closed, that was a five-person vote. And I think, I don't know if it was on Lawton on this board, but I wasn't here. I was in the crowd. But if you disagree with something, you say no. You don't abstain. That's the neutral route. And that's if you have a conflict of interest. So if you had no conflict, you should have voted no. The same thing with Bressler. If you had no conflict, you should have voted no. But I'm going to talk about Bressler because you issued the letter telling them you were going to shut them down if they didn't change their behavior. And they didn't change their behavior, so they got shut down. So why would you, why would you even think to issue a letter to a fire company if they weren't engaged in the behavior that you said they were? That's the problem. It's tough to make, it's tough to make, everything I'm saying is online. It's tough to make decisions up here sometimes because they go against the popular opinion or they go against the party line. But at the end of the day, you have to make a decision and you have to stand by your decision. And any decision that I've made up here relating to the fire service, I don't take back. I stand with it. And and I I just want to leave everybody with this. At some point, can we just get on with the meeting when it relates to fire? And just keep moving?
Commissioner, Commissioner Steele, I didn't plan for this all to be about Chambers Hill tonight. All I asked the Board of Commissioners was if you're going to not fund the Chambers Hill Fire Company, vote on it and make the decision as a group, not one commissioner. And secondly, give us the financial information about the bills that we asked for so we can do some planning. That's all I asked for.
Mary, you don't have to apologize. You were called up to the podium to talk about Chambers Hill. That was the chief's decision to call you up to talk about Chambers Hill. We didn't sit down this route tonight to talk about Chambers Hill. It was the chief bringing it up for discussion. So as far as I'm concerned, it wasn't anybody on this board, and I think I'm pushing back one Commissioner Steele statement, that every time something's on the agenda, Chambers Hill brought, nobody on this board brought that up tonight except for the chief standing there. Number one. Secondly, I, secondly, excuse, just for one minute, I'm going to like just finish my point here. Every vote that you've taken, Commissioner Chief Steele, as far as I'm concerned, is a conflict of interest. You want to sit up here and you want to pretend that you're an unbiased opinion and you're you're voting based just on business. You are a chief and you voted to close down other stations. When you do that, it's a conflict as far as I'm concerned. And people may not, it may not be written in writing anywhere. It's a conflict if Chief Steele votes on fire matters, but you should use your good judgment. And as far as I'm concerned, it is a conflict. Every time disciplinary action is handed down to a station, you are disciplining your fellow firefighter. It's not being handled by anybody else. It's a conflict. And to sit up here and grandstand and 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 go down this philosophical, emotional trail, it it wasn't based on emotions. Me sitting here is based on pure logistics. More stations through, spread throughout a township of fourteen square miles and twenty-seven plus thousand residents is logistically better to have three rather than two, rather than one. And I stand by that statement. I am a resident of Chambers Hill, yes, but that's not why I think there needs to be a station there. I think there needs to be a station there because anybody that's driven up and down Chambers Hill in the winter time and down Mushroom Hill Road and other areas knows that that there should be a fire truck there. And going back to the points that were made in that one incident in Chambers Hill where um, the engine didn't respond, I'd like to touch on that for a minute. Chief Ipperson, you and I discussed that issue in quite great length at the time. And there was a couple pieces of apparatus that were being worked on at the township building. And Rutherford's engine was called to the scene. Rutherford's engine um, had some engine, some trouble going up Mushroom Hill Road. They pulled off, actually, I ran into them. I said, what are you doing here? You're supposed to be at the fire. There was nobody to run. There was nobody else responding. It would have been incumbent upon somebody at that time to call for a lower SWAT or, you know, one of the mutual aid companies. That is your guaranteed response, too. We have mutual aid companies, right?
They're not guaranteed, but if you listen to what I'm saying, they're having the same issues.
But I would like you to go back to that incident and I would like you to pull for me all of the apparatus that was present that day. And I would like to know all of the apparatus that was at the township building getting worked on that day.
What incident?
The one, one Chatham Drive. I would like to have that information.
The what?
The garage part?
Yes.
Oh, no, there was, no, there was an engineer. I actually responded to go get the engine out, but my key fob didn't work because they shut my key fob off.
I didn't say there wasn't an engineer.
Yeah, no, there was an engine in Chambers Hill. I went to go drive the engine, but they had cut, somebody in their station cut my key fob on, so I couldn't, I couldn't get on the engine and respond.
There was also other apparatus.
Yeah, you remember that, right?
There was other apparatus.
Cut my key fob off, so I couldn't drive the fire truck.
I guess I can't finish. You know what? Honestly, I'm just done. I'm done because you know.
Thanks for verifying that, Mary.
No point verifying. I'm making a point that I was, I remember the call distinctly. I was like a list of all the pieces that were on that call. Because there was a piece of apparatus down at the garage getting fixed, getting worked on. There was an engine that was responding from Rutherford that had engine trouble on the way up the hill. They never made it to the call. So just saying that there should always be a Plan B. There's never, you know, there's always got to be a Plan B or C or D or E.
We do have multiple plans.
What companies were called that day and who was on scene?
That's, yeah, that's easy to pull.
Thank you. And that's all I was asking for.
Give me the information off the top of my head.
I didn't need the rude interruption. I just wanted to have a list.
I just, I want to say a few more things and then I'll be done. It is more important to get a fire truck responding within a minute and thirty seconds than it is to have multiple fire stations that wait six to eight minutes to respond. Yes, that model did work for years. That's because that's just, that's what it was, right? We responded from home. I was a home responder where I grew up and I was a home responder when I moved down here. I was never living at a firehouse. But no matter how you look at it, and I say this all the time, if Train A leaves the station at this time, at this speed, and then Train B leaves at a faster speed, six minutes later, it's never going to catch Train A. Getting, we are, you're right, we're fit, we're we're about fourteen, fifteen square miles. So getting that response out in a minute, thirty seconds is is what we need. It's not about how many stations we have. Logistically, with that response time, two stations would improve our response times right now. And I'm just going to read some stats because I did have these from the last fire board meeting. And this is no stab, and Mary knows this, this is no stab at at Chambers Hill, just because it was, again, an at-home response station where people are coming from further away. In twenty, twenty nineteen, in the Chambers Hill area, a fire truck, a fire truck arrived less than eight minutes, sixty-seven point seven one percent of the time. In twenty twenty, sixty-eight point oh nine percent of the time, there was a fire truck there in less than eight minutes. In twenty twenty-one, eighty percent, eighty point three six percent of the time. In twenty twenty-two, eighty-one point four three percent. And twenty twenty-three, eighty-six point zero nine percent, and twenty twenty-four, eighty-five percent. The reason that those percentages went up is when we took Chambers Hill out of service in twenty twenty-two, at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, that took that six to eight-minute response time, pull out on the ramp and start driving to the call, that took that away because we had staffing at another station. And sometimes we had staffing at the other station, so fire trucks were on the street quicker and they were getting there quicker. You can't, like those, and these are, you can say manipulated numbers, whatever. These are point, they're right from our reporting system. Like, there's nothing here. Anyone can have copies of this.
I would like copies. Also, if you could give me copies of the number of calls that were responded to. Does it have the number of calls? Does, does this have like the number of calls for each of those years?
Scanning information. What do you mean it's a show?
The total calls like for the township or?
No, the total call, you said this was for Chambers Hill area. I would also like the number of calls in those areas for those years.
I believe it's on that sheet.
Okay.
If not, there's a, I can figure out how to get a report for you.
Thank you. And I I'm perfectly within my right to ask for information, Commissioner Steele. Thank you.
I've always given whatever commissioners ask for, I give it to them. So that you do. That's all I have. Anything else for me?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for, yeah, Mary, for coming up. All right, we'll go on to the Police Department and Community Service Report. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Eric Durham, Community Life Team EMS, uh, with the EMS numbers for Swetera for June twenty twenty-five. Uh, Community Life Team responded to four hundred and fourteen calls in Swetera Township. Uh, we had thirty-seven calls covered by mutual aid, uh, given a total of four hundred and fifty-one EMS calls in Swetera. These numbers, Community Life Team covered ninety-two percent of those calls with an average response time of eight minutes and twenty-two seconds. Any questions for me?
Hearing none, I would run if I were you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I I had one thing that we're, not not for a fire service report, just to throw this out. Um, on the twelfth of July, you can keep coming, Thompson, it'll be real quick. Twelfth of July, we were planning on doing the Swati float. We were switching the, uh, main, um, portion of responsibility this year from police to fire. Uh, with the the height of the creek, number one, uh, and safety, we're going to postpone that until, um, August the ninth. So we already said that we're going to have it, so we're going to, we're going to be changing that tonight. We're going to postpone and get it online. And, um, at the same time, the the water level was a little unsafe. We found out the arrangements for, um, District Magistrate Smith would be at the same time. So, uh, we're postponing that for weeks. I just want to put that under the fire report because it was actually a fire function, even though the chief had committed to it and we were going to have our community service police officer there. So I just want to get that out now. Um, anybody planning to come that day? We're going to play it safe and we'll do it on August ninth at eleven AM. More information will come out. Thank you. Sorry.
All good. Perfect. That saves me some sentences later in the report. That's good. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening again, Commissioners. I am pleased to present the Police Department Report for the month of June twenty twenty-five. As far as our calls for service, we had one thousand two hundred and ninety calls in Swetera Township and seventy-one in Paxton Borough for a total of one thousand three hundred and sixty-one calls. Our Part One crimes, uh, the total number, we had, uh, two reported rapes, two robberies, twenty-two assaults, two burglaries, fifty larcenies, and one motor vehicle theft for a total of seventy-nine Part One crimes. And our Part Two crime totals were one forgery, twelve fraud, one embezzlement, nine vandalism, fourteen drug offenses, ten DUIs, one liquor violation, four public drunkenness, seven for disorderly conduct, and twenty-five that were in the all-other category for a total of eighty-four reported Part Two crimes. On the second page, our monthly statistics, we had a total of eighty arrests, eight DUI arrests, eighty traffic citations, one hundred and thirty-nine traffic warnings, eighteen non-traffic citations, twenty-two parking violations, fourteen foot patrols and four school foot patrols. On our Crime and Call Trends section, you see there for the month of June, all of our numbers are actually down from the previous month. And they're also down year-to-date in twenty twenty-five as compared to the same point in time in twenty twenty-four. Our Community Services section, in June, we had six events and presentations, which brings us up to a total of thirty-five for the year, one enforcement program, which puts us at six for the year. We collected eighty point nine eight pounds in unused prescription medication and expired medication last month, which brings us up to three hundred and sixty-four point four five pounds of expired and unused medication, which is a lot. And eleven mix-up inspections in the month of June, which brings that unit up to a total of fifty-one inspections for the year. Uh, we had a lot of community service events last month, but the one that we highlighted in this report uh, was all the activity that took place in honor of Juneteenth. The Police Department joined the Fire Department and Public Works employees for two pop-up barbecue events. The first occurred on June eighteenth, the basketball courts located at Conestoga and Bailey Streets. The second occurred on June nineteenth at Hoy and Latchaw Towers on Moon Street. Rutherford Fire was cooking delicious free hot dogs and hamburgers, and I did eat a hamburger. It was delicious. Um, at both locations and both events were very well attended and everybody had a great time. As far as our upcoming events, we have Coffee with a Cop this Friday. It's July eleventh at eight AM at the City Line Diner, which is there in Paxton at thirty-three oh two Dairy Street. Uh, Commissioner Connolly mentioned the Swati float is being postponed. That was the next thing on our list. The Family Fun Festival, want to throw that out there as well. That's coming up on July nineteenth from noon until seven thirty in the forty-nine-hundred block of Dairy Street and at Veneta Park. It's a new event. It will feature live music, a DJ, inflatable for the kids, uh, rides and multiple food trucks. And last but not least, our National Night Out event is right after the Family Fun Fest. That takes place on August fifth from six PM until eight thirty at Veneta Park as well. We're still looking for some more vendors for this event. So if anyone out there is interested in being a vendor, you can just go to sweterapolic.org and register. The event is completely free. It's open to the general public. We'll have free food and drinks along with inflatables for the kids, static displays of police vehicles and fire apparatus. We're also going to have a lot of interactive activities for the kids with some of our police officers. We're also going to have a lot of interactive activities for the kids with some of our police officers, as well as a live police canine demonstration. And the complete breakdown of all of our calls for service are on the pages that follow. All of this will be posted in the Township Lobby and it will also be on our website. And that is the conclusion of the report. If you want to take any questions.
Not a question, but just to add to that, if you are interested in being a vendor, I looked before we came in and it looks like the cutoff date to apply would be July twenty-eighth. So for anyone that's interested, you still have time.
Thank you.
Yep. Does anyone have anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Manager Trafca for Public Works and Recreation Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening again, Commissioners. I'll quickly go over the June monthly report for the Public Works and Parks and Rec. Public Works staff continued summer maintenance, which includes road repair, roadside mowing, street sweeping, and roadside spraying. The June activities, we continue working at the compost facility, grinding woody waste and turning the leaves. Public Works staff performed routine road maintenance, as I said. We continued street sweeping as always, and as Superintendent Stouffer said, Public Works and Parks and Rec staff participated in movie night at Ivy Ridge and the Juneteenth pop-up barbecues at both locations. Park and Rec, again, continues their summer maintenance program. We continue with the park maintenance, maintaining the grounds, removing trash, cleaning bathrooms, and routine maintenance. As always, they continue to work on the baseball and softball fields. They also continued in the two events, and as Superintendent Stouffer said, we continue to work on the planning for the, the Family Fun Festival on July nineteenth. So we're looking forward to that. So that's the end of my report tonight.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions?
I, I do have something, we didn't really list it on air as, as an event because it didn't take a lot of staff time. But on Juneteenth, at Midland, Historic Midland Cemetery, we had a tour. And I want to say the, the first person to show up for the tour, who was the only person at the beginning, was Director Trafca and I believe his granddaughter Ellie, if I have her name right. And Barbara Barksdale, at some point, I don't know if it happened when you were there, but there was another tour group in a big, she wanted to thank Swetera Township, Public Works, and I had mentioned that you were there, and you specifically, because even though we didn't do anything on that day because it was a Township holiday on the nineteenth, she appreciates all the, the work that we do and including our Police Department and Lieutenant Crayling specifically for, for helping to maintain that property. So I didn't see it on the event list, but we did have, we did have another event. You were a part of it and you were there, so I don't want to skip that, so thank you for what you do.
I, I do have a comment. When, I, I guess, like, probably a couple of weeks ago, and you and I had spoken regarding draining Rainbow Hills Swim.
Correct.
Pool. I just want to just reiterate that if there's anything we can do, I'm, I'm getting numerous complaints from people in, like, the Overland area that just would like to see it cleaned up a little bit as far as the maintenance. I know, you know, there's a lot going on, but I do think that, you know, anything we can do, and I would also like to note, note that I would want our staff to use the proper, you know, gear to protect themselves, because I do think this time of year, it's a mosquito hazard, it's, it's an issue. I, I think that there's, like, some stuff at the bottom of that pool. I don't want our staff to have to deal with it, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're keeping our community safe as well. So I just want to point out that I appreciate everything you're doing, because I know I asked and you guys handled it pretty quickly, I'm assuming.
We did.
But, you know, just, anything we can do to just maybe whack some weeds down or just try to, like, you know, assist. I, I've gotten, I don't know, three or four complaints, I'm not sure if you have a president or a list, but. And then I, I've also seen some comments on Facebook, just, just to try to address their concerns is, yeah, appreciate that.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I'll just let you know, we did spray the fence line. And again, unfortunately, this year was a, was an excessively wet year, right? So most of the time, we don't do the herbicide spraying during the wet season, right? We want to do that during the dry times. And then as I, as I stated to you when we, when we spoke on the phone, we did pump out, we always pump out the pool after the winter, snow melt, and, you know, the, the, the water then. And then again, with the rain that we received in May, we did pump the pool a second time in May. My staff does monitor the pool pretty regularly. And then, you know, again, we did, you know, we received a significant amount of rain in June. It was on my radar, as I told you, but unfortunately, we couldn't get the truck in there, you know, ahead of time, or I would have hopefully cut those complaints off. But, but certainly, I appreciate your input and we will do whatever we can to keep it as healthy as we can.
Yeah, you know, thanks, thanks to you, and, and also, please extend my thanks to the, the guys on staff. I mean, I knew, and girls, I'm not sure if we have at this point, but I knew we're, you know, somewhat short-staffed with some of the retirements and things like that. So I do want to also express my thanks to them for, in some cases, they may be doing double duty.
Oh, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want, on that subject, I had a couple neighbors ask me about it because that, that water out of season generally is treated with, at least on two chlorine, three-inch chlorine tabs. I'm not saying there can't be mosquitoes airborne around it, but mosquitoes should not survive in that water and that shouldn't be something that produces water. But at the same time, with all the rain, maybe we want to check the dumpster with tires and things like that, because it doesn't take much water.
For sure.
It's not treated. But I, I, you were on vacation, so I called Brendan and Brendan said that there was at least two blocks in there. They're good for ten thousand gallons, that deep end won't have ten thousand gallons, so there was double. And you have to let that, that chlorine is, is good for, it's sort of a green and slimy, but it, it will kill bacteria and mosquitoes. So it was kind of a double the rate. And at the same time, when it's pumped out, you have to let that parts per million decline because you don't want to pump out water that has a high rate of chemicals. So, so it's a balancing act. So it's treated, as far as I know, all the time, basically from, from March until November, with, there's just three-inch chlorine tabs that people would have in their pool. But when, when a neighbor asked me about it, I could see a broken one on spillway. So normally, there's one either, either broken or laying on the spillway, so the water flows past it and then that slowly releases. And I'm not saying I can see it, but when I asked Brendan, there's another one sunk in, into the deep end, and Kevin can back up on this. I believe, once the Township took over the pool, holes were drilled. So it's, it's not, it's not the exact same thing as, as a pool. It's a, it's almost like a retention pond. And while we're saying that, I think we are very close to a plan of having the pool taken out and Phil going in there as, as part of, of the building project, so. But as somebody that, that ran that pool as a, as a volunteer for sixteen years, we would, we would pump out the deep end and we would hear from the hotel and things like that. And it, it's tested, and, and I believe even the county comes around, I'm not sure if they get in now, but they would do West Nile testing around the, the pool. But, I mean, I, I know visually, I want to say it was last week, when you're, it was before this round of heavy rain. I called you and you were away, and then I called Brendan and, and, just, just so the, the residents know, that's not just stagnant water sitting there. So it, so it's, it's treated to the level to kill, I'm supposed to say six things, algae odor, bacteria, mosquito larvae, but.
Kevin and I didn't get a chance to talk, but I did, I did speak to Superintendent Stouffer about the possibility of putting a gate in, in the fence that we could access from the Township property and go through. That, that the issue had been trying to get the vac truck through the small gate that was there across the grass when it was significantly wet was just causing a lot of problems. So I think there had been, Tom and I had talked, I believe, the end of last week while Kevin was on vacation about what we could do and could we put a, a double gate in there? And it had been brought up, but it wasn't really conveyed to the chief properly. So, and again, Kevin and I had been working on the Family Fun Fest project this week, so we really didn't have a chance to chat, but I think that might, that might actually solve and be able to just open the gate and get the truck pulled in more frequently if.
Brendan, would you, would you even need a gate? I mean, basically, our whole compound's already fenced in anyway, so just cut, cut the section out that you need.
I, I, I think the chief would prefer that the.
I don't think I want anybody going in there.
So the kid can't walk in.
We want kids or somebody going in.
No, I'm saying, it would, the side he's talking about, it would only be our side, that's it.
It's on the interior.
It's on the interior.
Cut the fence, peel it back, and then put it back up, so it'd look exactly the same.
I know what you're saying, Tom, Tom, Tom and I had talked about that. He, I think, and I don't want to speak for him, but I think he said he'd feel better if it was a gate insecure just for that extra layer of protection. Because you're right, there's, there's the fence and then it's fenced in for the pool. So that's the inner portion, so technically, if that was gone, you still have the outer portion. However, the, the main portion of the Township building is barbed wire on this portion, and then when you go to the PD side, it's all higher, higher fencing. And, and again, I don't want to speak for the chief, but again, we can, we can talk offline about it.
I, I doubt that, you know, I think the biggest concern I brought up was just addressing it, and I appreciate that, you know, and thank you, you know, Commissioner Conley for bringing up the additional precautions that were taken. I still doubt anybody would want to swim in it, but it seems to me like we're definitely staying on top of it, so.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're up to item eleven, Conditional Offer of Employment Pending Civil Service List Certification, Background Investigation, and Medical Evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
And this was for five part-time firefighters. We have a motion and a sec, a second, do we have any discussion at this time?
The only discussion I would add is that it's our Fire Township Civil Service Board that's signing off on the eligibility list with the five names.
I do have a question for Chief Everson. With the hiring of these five, what, what total will that bring us to for part-time staff?
Fourteen, but one is, want to leave an absence, he got hired somewhere and is going to be doing stuff in the military. So, and I believe another one's about ready to get deployed as well.
Okay.
So, we're gaining but losing.
Yep, thank you. All right, do we have any other discussion at this time? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that is approved, we're up to item twelve. Rutherford, approval of Rutherford, Rutherford Fire Company feasibility study contract with Mans Woodward. I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, by way of discussion, do you want to go over for the public?
I'll, I'll start and I'll turn it over to Chief Everson. Mans Woodward is the company that's doing the Public Safety Center here at, at this Township complex. As people know, we purchased the Rutherford Fire Company, the Township owns it now. And as part of the plan of having a minimum of two fully functioning fire stations, there's going to be improvements made to Rutherford. It's, it's already up and running, but it's not up to the, the standards of today. So we're looking at a feasibility study to see what we need to do at Rutherford. We're at a minimum, we would expect, in addition, on the building, health and safety updates and changes. So we're, we're putting this on a contract that's already existing where we have some credits and, and working with Mans Woodward's, who are, obviously, they're a professional in public safety buildings and architecture. So, did I do that justice, Chief Everson?
Yeah.
All right, do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and I'll try to make it quick, but I'm just trying to figure out why we're, we haven't even started the one that the majority on this board is building. We've got a twenty-million-dollar loon for that, we've got Bishop Park that's in progress. I'm glad to see that we're doing some more park maintenance projects because that's also important, as, you know, stated earlier. Sometimes, some of the other things take a priority over other things in our Township that need to be addressed, like our roads and our parks and things as such. But this, to me, seems like a waste at this time. I don't see why we need to put the cart before the horse, horse before the cart, I don't know, huh, whatever, and continue to, you know, look to where we're going to spend more money when we haven't even finished the projects that we've started in this Township. So for those reasons, I mean, I'm not opposed to looking to where we can do some changes, renovations, upgrades to our fire stations in the future. I know that I was one of the ones that was pushing for some of the upgrades that we did at the ninety-one station. And, you know, we also made some, purchased some furniture and did some things at the Rutherford Station when I was a chairfire. So I, I believe in providing quality spaces for our firefighters and updating our, our stations and things like that. But I don't think that spending forty-five thousand dollars right now for a feasibility study, when I do know that they've had some recent renovations at that station, is a proper, you know, use of our funds. We, we've got, I, I really would urge this board to not bite off more than they can swallow and actually finish what we've started. So, thank you.
The only thing, I, I got two parts. If Commissioner Ellis and Commissioner Conley, I, I can support this, I, I like this idea. Can you add to your motion that we would study the feasibility of a police substation being put there in EMS as well? I, I mean, I, I think that's, that's great for police, fire, and EMS. And then secondly, I, I know some of the contracts the Finance Department reviewed, and it was my understanding that this actually wouldn't be a waste of money. This is actually a credit that we already have, would that be right, Chief Everson? Yes. So it's something we already paid for and we're just using this for, to do a feasibility study on the new facility for Rutherford and obviously, police and EMS, so, great points.
So did you just come up with a police substation now to?
If you read the document, it's listed in there.
Well, I didn't see a police substation in here.
It is, I'm, I'm looking to find it, but it's in there.
So why, it wasn't part of the original motion, that's why I'm asking.
It's included in this proposal that we would be voting on, so it is included.
Okay.
But I'll find it.
Would appreciate a kinder tone, but in any case.
That's just how I'm speaking right now.
I think we're getting a new police station, I think we're getting a new fire.
I'm looking for the information so that I can give it to the two of you.
Well, it's okay, but I would appreciate a little bit nicer tone.
Page four.
When addressing.
I missed that.
Right, you, here's the thing.
Am I a member of this board?
Here's the thing.
Am I a member of this board?
You're not going to tone police anyone when you interrupt everyone every five minutes to speak. Right, and then you speak like that. Would you like the answer to your question, because it's on page four.
No, I don't want the answer.
Under program.
Let's just move on, it's fine.
I missed that, thank you, President.
You're good, yes, it says police substation, which we understand consists of a separate conference work area dedicated for the Police Department, which may also be made available to the Fire Department when not being used by the police. And it also says that the program noted above is understood to be the minimum requirements, and there are a bunch of things, so if you read through the document, that is included in it. The other things that I want to point out for the public would be what the deliverables from the forty-five thousand dollar project would be, the feasibility study. It says you would get program documents showing all required programmatic elements, their size and preliminary ideal configurations for use and developing preliminary conceptual building plans, site plans completed to a preliminary conceptual level of detail for all study options, building and floor plans completed to a preliminary slash conceptual level of detail for all study options, project budget and preliminary estimate of costs for all study options, as well as a report detailing the methodology findings and recommendation of the study. This report is intended to be concise document having five to ten pages as appropriate. And there was one other thing that I wanted to, the codes and standards. It says that the codes and standards that this would bring the Fire Company building up to include but are not limited to the International Building Code, NFPA Life Safety Code, ADA, and applicable NFPA station standards. So again, we're attempting to make it safer. to make it safer for the firefighters so that we have those different standards in place for a building that's existing that we know people are running out of currently. Um, and it's important for them to have access to things that are going to make it safer for them after they return from a call so they can decontaminate, do all those things. Because when they leave those calls, they might have chemicals and uh, contaminants, carcinogens left on their body. We don't have the up-to-date standards currently in that station to ensure that they're not taking those things home to their family. So that's, that's, that's why this is important. So that's all I have.
You need um, an area to wash off and a washer and dryer. I mean, I don't understand, you have no clue about the fire service at all. And secondly, your tone is extremely disrespectful.
Can we keep it to the topic at hand?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And third, okay, third, I love how this board sits up here and they, they want to just keep, they, they, they don't finish projects. I haven't seen one thing, we haven't even started the projects and yet, and you want to move on to what's next. You're slapping lipstick on this building. I was told we've got plumbing issues. I was told we have electrical issues. My first year on the board, Commissioner Connolly backed me into a corner. Something's got to be done. It's dangerous. We have electrical problems. We got plumbing issues. And, and you're slapping lipstick on it now. The problems went away. You're slapping lipstick on it and you're looking to where you're going to spend the next million dollars. I don't know where we're getting all the money, but when you say you want a full-time fire department, you want, you know, there's been people in this room that have said that, and we're slowly, you know, migrating toward it. You're, you know, hiring part-timers and doing all, all good, it's fine. You're hiring part-timers, that's fine. But yet, then you have another park. You have another building that you're working on. You have all of these other projects and all of these, you know, coals in the fire. And I don't understand why this board can't just finish something before moving on to something else.
Um, I just wanted to.
I'm going to respond. Um.
You can respond or you want. I'm done.
For, for the two years that you were president, a lot of these projects were in the pipeline and they stalled. So now we're going to go ahead and go forward with them.
You stalled them.
Because we had funding that they were tied to, and we have to use the funding.
You stalled them.
We're in danger of losing millions of dollars of grant money. So that's why we're moving through all of these projects right now.
You always blame other people.
Because there were two years where nothing was done with those projects where we got funding for.
And you borrowed 20 million dollars. 20 million dollars you borrowed.
It was 17 point something.
480,000 dollars a year.
And we got 20 million.
And 83 properties went away. And all of this thing happened in 2020. And by 2020 to 2021, with you and your dad at the helm, we lost $2 million. Look at the revenues. 15 million in 2020, 13 million in 2021. Where did the money go? You're incompetent.
Okay.
I, I just want to touch on the finance specific to this project, and then I may touch on something else. But um, the, the timing is, right now, we're working on the project. The things are coming to um, code, zoning, planning, architect, all this. We're already working on it. So to save money for the township, we thought this was the time to do it with somebody. And we have credits built into the contract. And it really was a courtesy for Mans Woodward to take on a second project and help us out. The reason we're doing this is the agenda that we have, which is to save lives and provide fire protection here in Swatara Township.
Please stop interrupting.
Two stations. The 20 million dollar borrowing was done years ago at an extremely low interest rate. We're now in 2025 at a 3.64 mils here in Swatara Township. Uh, not to besmirch the other two property taxing entities, but property taxes haven't gone up here for about 13 years. We lowered them once. Uh, those of you that got a tax bill recently saw that the Central Dolphin School District raised taxes 4.85% on a much higher mileage rate. That's real money that you're paying. Dolphin County raised taxes 22% this year. We're arguing where we just heard from our fire chief, who is a professional with impeccable credentials and standards, that we're getting to a fire in five minutes and 21 seconds with 69 firefighters. And everything is great, but every time we say something about it, it seems like there's, there's something negative. Um, Chambers Hill is struggling and we're working to do that. Rutherford is in a key position. You're saying we'd like to have three? I'm not saying I'm opposed to that. We need two. In a 14 square mile, we need two. We know that Dairy is similar to us, similar population. They have one. Lower Swatara, similar size, smaller population. They have one. Two fire stations where firefighters are getting out the door to save people's homes and property. And you have to remember, fires account for somewhere around 10% of the calls. A lot of these calls are medical emergencies, hazmat situations, flooding incidents, things where our guys are out there saving lives and doing what they need to do. And my job as the committee chair is to make sure they do it with the best training, the, the best incentives, uh, the, the pay, whatever we can do, because it's our residents. And all of these improvements that we're hearing has not cost anybody in this room, any resident, one additional cent. I'm not sure how long we can, can keep it up, but we're doing a great job. And we're spending down on a bond that we were very fortunate to get at a low interest rate. And I understand that sometimes people come to the meeting and they're a commissioner at the meeting or they're commissioner of the week. I'm living here the rest of my life. I am committed to this township. I came to meetings for 20 years before I was on the board. And anything that, that I do or say is really rooted in professional advice. Um, you know, the, the fire chief, the architect, the company that builds these, Mr. Golden's been, been involved in this stuff. They're making incredible decisions. And then on meeting night, we don't respect the decisions. I, I don't understand that. But anyway, Rutherford is well positioned on Dairy Street. Dairy was the largest, Dairy Street area of Rutherford was the largest population increase since this tract in Dolphin County. It's a growing community. They're positioned that they can get to their half of the township. We had, we had the circles put out by engineers. Like, we're doing things to save people's lives and provide for our residents. We're not fighting over the color of a fire truck or, you know, whether people have something or not. But I will, I will say this. As much as we ask Mr. Everson in these meetings for all these things on short notice in front of people, I'm asking Commissioner Zubek Kentucky to provide me the list of the 11 firefighters you say they have at Chambers Hill and the 16 that you say. Because I got a list for Mary with one. So I want to see those lists.
Mary had the list. I didn't see that.
No, no. You said it. I want to see the list.
I did say I had a list.
Because we're making up things and then arguing about things that aren't true. Right. That is fabrication.
You're fabricating.
Just provide the list.
Just like you always do.
In fact, provide it to Chief Everson. Provide the list to Chief Everson of those 11 firefighters.
Mary, please provide the list that you've already provided to Commissioner Connolly months ago. Please give him the list.
Yeah, we'd like to see that.
Thank you. Yeah, you saw the list. She gave you the list.
Does anyone else have anything at this time?
You have selective memory.
Yes. We're going to let Commissioner Tucky speak. Go ahead.
Yep. Um, it's funny that Commissioner Connolly talked about fabrication. Last meeting, he held up this document saying it was this report that came from, what is, the special committee, right? It was actually the paperwork for Chief Everson's assistant. There was no document. I, I'm just tired of stuff being misled all the time. I think, well, I restated what I think about Chambers Hill. When it comes to the spending that this board has been doing, we have to be smart with what we're doing. The, the residents, I'm telling you right now, you're going to get slammed here real soon if it keeps going this way. I do believe in public safety. I do believe in the volunteers and protecting them and doing everything we can for them. We have to be smart with what we're doing, with our resources in this township. And it's not happening. When you look at the building, I mean, right now, what's going on, over 800 some thousand dollars that was put, is being put into it. And it is just paint and flooring. That's what it is. Should be electrical. It should be HVAC. It should be everything that is needed if this is the plan to keep this building. And when you talk about prolonging projects, the prior board, which we were a majority of, that project was sitting upstairs in the back. It was actually all throughout the meeting room for a good part of, how long, Commissioner Zubek?
Quite a while.
And there was tours through this building showing all the issues with this building to residents. So you can't tell me that we did not do everything possible to have this move forward. Unfortunately, it was ready to go out for bid, but unfortunately, at that time, uh, the board changed. And uh, it'd just be nice to have the truth up here instead of constantly making things look a certain way. And uh, you talk about agenda for public safety. I'm all for public safety, but there's been an agenda in this township for years with certain things. And I think we have to be smart with the decisions we're making moving forward and how we're spending our resources. Because I'm telling you, all the residents right now might not be next year, but it's coming if we keep spending money without thinking about seriously how we're going to pay for this stuff. And Commissioner Connolly, you stated quite a few times now in the past few years about you even reduced taxes. It was right before you ran for commissioner again that year. And you used that on your campaign. And really, the residents, a lot of the residents in that meeting that night asked you not to do it. And it benefited mainly a lot of the businesses in this township a lot more than the 12 dollars we all got roughly average per household. So, you know, you're going to do what you're going to do. I just think we have to be smarter with how we're spending our resources. And I am for the volunteers. I am for protecting them. They have the best of the best right now. Decontamination center, put it in there, in the, in the firehouse. You don't have to spend $45,000 to make that decision. But there's a bigger plan by the majority of this board. It's not all about stuff like that. And I thought we were having, the majority of this board's voting to move forward with this project for over here at the municipality building, put a brand-new firehouse. Majority of public does not want a brand-new firehouse here. We have had four in our township. What we have for our resources, I believe, are decent, and we should be using them. If you need to upgrade our stations, then do it. But the amount of money you're talking about, we're not going to have it. You talk about $20 million that you borrowed. You're right, you borrowed it. But there's not, that's not even a drop in the bucket right now for what stuff's costing. And we did have the plan, and it was a good plan. But unfortunately, it was stopped after the last election. So I just wish that this board would be 100% straight up with everyone before you make comments like that. Thank you.
I move, I move here to a vote.
Um, I'm going to say something first. For the public, the plan that Commissioner Tucky is referencing, but for the building, um, it would have included a new admin. It would have been a police station. Um, I have the concept plan here. If anyone wants it, let me know. I'll send it to you. It's dated October 5th, 2022. You heard that we borrowed $20 million. We actually only borrowed 17 point, I don't know the number off the top of my head, million, but we received 20 million because of the financial shape that the township was in. So we're only responsible for paying back a little more than 17 million.
Money's not free.
Not for, please don't interrupt, or I will have the mics turned off. Please don't interrupt.
Okay.
Thank you. So again, um, yeah, take my train of thought away. So we are only responsible for paying back about, uh, just under 18 million dollars of the 20 million dollars that was borrowed. The cost estimate that is listed here in this plan from October of 2022, the total building uh, construction, it says 26,907,600 dollars up to 28,838,000 dollars. If you flip to the next page, it says that you need to.
That's not true.
Account for 12 to 16% of construction costs to cover soft costs.
That's not true.
So if you multiply those numbers by point 12 and point 16, uh, the, the low end of this project would have been 30 million dollars. The high end would have been 33 million dollars. We didn't have that money then in 2022.
That's not true.
We just talked about how construction costs have gone up. We have, which, uh, you can't see it right now because of the construction that's going on. We had the township engineer run those numbers recently, and it's, it would have been up to 44 million dollars for this plan.
That's completely wrong.
That's a lie.
We never had the money to do this plan, but we spent almost 2 million dollars or over 2 million dollars to get the site plan for something that we never had the money in the first place to build.
It runs an affair.
So again, I have the document. If anyone wants it, go ahead and fact-check me. I, I appreciate that. Uh, if I say something up here, I'm always going to have a document to support it. So, and thankfully, I keep it with me. That's why this, this binder that I keep, very big, can't close it anymore because I accumulate lots of documents and I keep them for when things like this are thrown out so that I can refer back to it and actually have the facts that I can present publicly.
Well, that's not the document you were given in the executive session with the actual cost, but whatever.
Right. And, and when.
That's not, that's not.
When, when did we have the exec, right. When did we have the executive session? So somehow, between October and whatever date we had the executive session.
You're a liar, and your binder is full of lies.
The number somehow magically went down.
And you can reach for whatever document you want.
Or have it, for anyone that wants to look at it.
But just like that made-up document you had for your building project was, was over 37 million. And I have that document.
Right.
Excuse me. I request that we please take this.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Tucky?
For the reasons I stated, no.
Commissioner Zubek?
Nope, for the reasons I stated.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Yes.
President Ellis?
Yes. All right. So we're on to approval of Bishop Park Project Award of Bid to Horse Excavating Company.
Motion.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, for the commissioners, you have the information in your packet. Um, it looks like the grand total for this is uh, just over 2.8 million dollars. We do have, what, what is the amount?
It's 2,852,837 and 3 cents.
The grant funding.
Uh, I'm, I'm bringing that up next. I just want to get hold of, Madam President. Um, we had a total of five bids. This is the lowest responsible bidder. Um, as far as um, grant funding, uh, we have 800,000 in DCR uh, money, which is C2P2, um, another 179,800 dollars from uh, LSA grant, and then also an additional 158,400 dollars from a second committed uh, LSA grant uh, from the county.
All right. I'm going to get out my calculator, say those numbers again, so I can do the math to see what it will actually cost the taxpayers. You're good at math. You could just give an estimate too. Go for it.
Um, I, I could give an estimate, but I'd also say we're still seeking other grant funds. But probably the, the best thing to say is so far, um, 1.2 million dollars has come from other sources. Uh, it's a 4 million dollar um, project. Uh, just quick background, the township bought the land when I wasn't on the board, um, from the previous landowner. A million dollars was spent. And now we're at the point that we can develop it as a park. And just like everything else, we're doing everything we can to use money that is not coming from either the taxpayers or the bond that we borrowed. So, um, Dalwood has worked with us. Um, this board has worked to get um, gaming grants. And um, when you were about to say what the taxpayers were going to pay, I'm not giving up on just subtracting that amount from the other. But to this point, um, we have uh, 1.2 million dollars in, in grants for this project.
I have a question. With the amount of the project, is it your professional assessment that there will be no tax increases for the taxpayers associated with this amount?
It is my professional assessment that as long as I sit on this board of commissioners, there will not be a tax increase in Swatara Township, no matter how long that is. So I didn't get involved with the project at the very beginning. I got on it when I was elected. Um, again, you got me. I went into this last week. I'm going to give you credit for um, using a local share grant opportunity to get um, almost 200,000 dollars of, of that 1.2 million.
And CNR, it was a good, yeah.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, just specifically that, you know, so we have choices to make. Really, if we, if we were to use the county gaming grant each year um, for 200,000 dollars. But I, I will admit, I'm, I do as much creative financing to get low rates and pursue as much grant money as I possibly can. Um, because just like everybody else here, I don't want to pay anymore. But my, my answer is yes, because we're so far into this, we're making the bond payment. Um, just a point of clarification on that, based on the design we have now. If, if it. If it came to the point where we put in different amenities that cost more money, then the cost would go up. But I'm still going to stick with, I, along with this board, would be able to figure out a way to do it without raising taxes. So the answer is, everything on the agenda tonight, as far as the recreation things coming up and the previous vote, I don't see raising any taxes to cover it.
So we got the LSA, I do remember, the C2P2 was $800,000? So what is the remainder that we need for the project?
About $1.6 million.
$1.6 million.
And we have bond funding, so.
And potentially.
Just so we're clear, I mean, this project.
So what, I'm just, I'm not, I'm sorry, can I finish asking my questions? So $1.6 million, and I'm not trying, I know you're probably, Commissioner Steele, like wanting, just so we're clear. I'm asking for my own edification, I'm not asking to be a naysayer, I just want answers so I know going forward. So $1.6 million, and then what is the total for the proposed building?
$24 million.
$24 million right now for the proposed building?
That was a few months ago.
Right, we have about $1.5 million.
So that's 25.6 million that we have to come up with?
To be honest with the public, we have a capital improvement plan that's online.
We have that too.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm just asking for the current, $24 million for the current building, and then $1.6 million.
Yes.
Just to be clear, I just added that up, it's 25.6 million. Okay, that's all I'm asking, thank you, I appreciate that.
And just to be clear, to keep going, there's, when we did the capital improvement plan, there was $30 million of spending. And we believe that we could do that on a 17.7 borrowing. And the reason is, on the building, we have a $2.5 million R cap grant that's there. We got $680,000 of another grant. So don't think because we're spending 30 million and we borrowed 20 million, we have 10 million.
So is the 24 million, that's not including the grant money that we've already acquired, or it is?
You asked the expense of the building, it's 24.
So how, is that including the grant money that we've already acquired, or not?
I think I can explain how this process is going to work.
No, I just, I'm just asking.
24 million in total, you can start subtracting the grant money.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I got what you're saying.
Thank you.
I think it's caused some confusion and.
There's no confusion, he answered my question.
Can I just, I'm not even talking to you, I'm talking to the public. So they would understand, because it doesn't make any sense.
Did you not just ask to not be interrupted? Could you please offer the same courtesy?
I was interrupted.
Could you please offer the same courtesy? Thank you.
I was interrupted.
If one would ask, how do you have 20 million and you're going to spend 30 million, you're confused, right? So the way this works is, we have a bond, and I've covered this several times, and I don't have an issue with covering it again. Several years ago, Sweater Township took out a bond. And in taking out that bond, by law, there has to be a drawdown on that bond, we got about $20 million. And we're in the point now where we've collected so much interest that we are in arbitrage phase. Essentially, we are being taxed by the IRS on our interest now. We did get a financial advisor, it allowed us to move our money into what they call a slug fund. And we can generate that interest, and then they're also going to calculate our arbitrage. But for the most part, arbitrage has stopped. So the way your government is going to work, when you hear is there going to be a tax increase, no, there's not going to be a tax increase, because we're going to take this bond money, and we're going to leverage this bond money against federal and state grants. So just for simplicity, if this government wants to spend a million dollars on a park, we can go out and try to get up and leverage a million dollars in grants. So, or we can leverage maybe 800,000, and it only will cost about 200,000 out of the bond. That's the process. And that's how we're going to be able to do so many projects with 20 million. So when you hear, you know, you've got 25.6 million dollar project over several projects, it's because we're leveraging grant money from the county, the state, and the federal government to complete the project. And ultimately, that's how you do more with less. You get a grant from other government entities. And hopefully, that explained a little bit better. Because sometimes, when you look at what we're trying to discuss up here, it can become confusing. As far as Bishop Park, yes, we're not done with going after grants for Bishop Park. So where you might see a $1.6 million still remaining, that doesn't mean our engineers aren't still going after grants. This project has to get started. We're already three years in the process. We've already extended so many grants already that we're at the point where the grant funding is going to be taken away. Where then, where you see that 1.6 that we still have to go over additional grant funding for, that might grow if the grant funding goes away, because you could essentially lose, you know, $800,000 in grants. So, and that was back in 2023, was the award date for that. The one LSA grant was back in 2022. So we got some things to do, and we got to move them along fast, and hopefully, I cleared that up a little bit. Thank you.
The only thing I'll add to that is, we have about $3.2 million worth of grant funding that we've already received that will go towards the municipal complex. Just for the public. And again, as Commissioner Conley said, the capital improvement plan is on the website. It's been discussed, one, two, three, four, five, six, at least seven times in public since I've been on the board, I was sworn in in January of 2020. So it's something that's been talked about quite a bit over the years. And it's available publicly for anyone, for inspection. All right, do we have any further discussion with regard to Bishop Park? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we also have approval of Bishop Park Stormwater Management Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants.
Motion.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. I'm just going to have our Director of Planning and Zoting just give a brief statement for the public for why this is necessary.
Yes, so the township was approved for a NPDES permit. And part of that permit's requirement is to, basically, it's like, basically it's a deed restriction that identifies certain post-construction stormwater management, stormwater control measures. And it requires the property owner, which is us, to forever implement those measures.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we're at approval of En Haunt Park cost estimate.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Either Vice President Steele or Commissioner Conley, could you just give a brief overview of what this will entail for the public?
I was actually looking for mine on the report.
Do we have a paper in here?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to start without, I was going to say. And I think we talked about this before. We have the opportunity every year to get a local share gaming grant from the county. Our share usually is about 150, this year it was $218,000. We were looking at improvements to En Haunt Park to be our project this year. Because of some work that we can do in-house with our staff, and some money that was left over from a previous project in this area, we decided not to use that 117 as our grant request, we used Ivy Ridge, which I think might be coming up next, or did we do that? So anyway, this is a $117 dollar improvement. And if you're familiar with En Haunt Park, it actually has, it's named after a former commissioner Kosovar. So it'll say Kosovar Park on the top, and then the lower part is named after former commissioner George Lebo. So some people call it by those names, but it's Lebo, Kosovar, En Haunt Park, it's in En Haunt. But it's getting upgrades, I'm not going to necessarily read them all, but a new playground piece, tennis courts that has a sinkhole issue, or some type of surface issue will be resurfaced. There'll be four pickleball courts, there'll be a small dog park run area. We've already spent a significant amount of money restoring the old wall that was there, so we have a nice solid retaining wall and steps down to the lower park. It's the pavilion, someone was nice enough to drive into the park where there's no driving or parking and hit the pavilion. And it's not really repairable, so that'll be replaced. And then the rest of it, just kind of, there is a retaining wall along those old tennis courts. I don't know why I wanted to, that's not Webb, what's the name of that?
That is Webb.
So it's an alley, Webb Street, Webb Alley, on the backside, if you're familiar with that. And then just overall improvements, including lighting, benches, tables, all that is in the bid. In this document, it's 117. I don't know, maybe Commissioner Steele knows the amount that was left over from some of the curb cut, what are they called? Accessible curb cuts and things like that. But I believe of the 117, if I have this right, about $50,000 is money that we already have, so.
Well, and $21,000 will come out of stormwater because of the retention wall. And then you got to think, just that there's 20,000 building just in contingency, so you're actually at 97. If you get rid of contingency, if the contingency's not that hot.
So what I'm getting at is to really get a new upgraded park with additional amenities for that community. The price tag is 117. We don't see spending anywhere near that amount of money out of the actual recreation budget, which is the general fund that we talk about in this meeting. Some will come out of stormwater, and some will come from grants that we already have in hand. Is that what you wanted me to do, or was that?
I'm taking that back, yeah.
I understand, so I had one.
And again, for the public, with regard to the wall reconstruction that was mentioned, that was completed in 2022. And it was $217,000. And in addition to the funding sources that were just mentioned, we've committed to about $400,000 worth of upgrades to our existing parks as well. And that's listed in the capital improvements plan that I said again is on, online for anyone to look through. Do we have any other questions or discussion at this time? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we're at approval of Ivy Ridge Park Cost Estimate.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're going to do the same thing, you found your documents.
Okay, for the audience, I struggled to find the other document. I'm going to struggle to read this one, this is extremely small. So off the top of my head, and the reason, the two that left to me are the committee chairs of Parks and Recreation. But because this has to do with finance, I'm the co-chair of finance. Ivy Ridge, 900 Harvard Court, I think is the address. Currently is a large open field, it has a decent amount of parking, I want to say there's 74 parking spots. A pavilion, if you're not familiar with it. And then it has a building that has a utility park for lights and storage. And it has a handicap accessible men's and women's bathroom. One play piece far out in the field, a fence around it, and then just the bollards with, I'm just describing the way, is it? Bollards with the cable to keep people off the field. We're actually going to want people to go on the field, because we're putting in a cricket pitch, which will be there, set in the field, you can play soccer over it, cut the grass over it. But we've had a request from residents and leagues to be able to play cricket there. So it's going to be a cricket pitch where the playground piece is, it's going to be like bookend with two additional playground pieces. They're strictly swing sets this time. One's going to be for like your 5 to 12 range, and the other one's going to be for infants. And I think we might have possibly a handicap accessible option on one of the swings there. Down at that end, there's going to be parking added, another handicap parking, there's going to be two sand volleyball courts put out in that field. There's going to be a stage put in for events next to the utility building, and the utility building will have a concession stand built on the side of it. Dalwood and Mr. Trafficco were heavily involved in the estimates. It's going to have a, Samba was the mountain bike, it's going to have a mountain bike trail connecting to the existing Samba and Greenbelt Trail, so there's going to be some excavating down the hill. If you're not familiar with this, this overlooks the Spring Creek, Dolphin County Prison area, it's high on the plateau there. And I don't know if I covered all the amenities. And the positive thing about this is, this is what we use the gaming grant for. We were told the max is 150 at the county. We presented a good plan. I was out of town, so I know Commissioner Steele was part of the presentation, they gave us the whole $218,000. Only negative thing I could say here is that a contingency was put in by Dalwood, and I don't know if it's, it was 10%.
20%.
So they're saying that maybe to do all the things that we want to do at today's price, even though we got $218,000 award, it could be up to 238. But we feel, 228, we feel that, I can't see the numbers.
228,307.
And in with that is some in-house stuff that we're going to do. So we think that we're going to be able to do the whole project for $218,000, which has already been awarded. And if I missed any of the amenities, it's because I can't see the paper, I apologize.
Do we have any other discussion at this time? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we are up to approval of HRG's proposal for Donald Taylor Park.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, because we'll have our stormwater engineer.
I won't be talking about this one.
Yeah. Mike Hess come and give an explanation. We did vote on a portion of this in the stormwater meeting, so now we're doing the portion that would be township funding.
Yes, ma'am. So you probably remember a description of the project from the Stormwater Authority meeting here before this meeting, but for the benefit of anyone who might not have been there. We have some improvements proposed at Donald Taylor Park that have been in the works for several years. There's sort of an environmental and stormwater or MS4 component to it, and there's a recreational component. The stormwater component was designed by a previous consultant, Land Studies, it's a stream restoration and floodplain, pretty similar to what was done two years ago, farther upstream above the baseball fields. That that would continue down through Donald Taylor Park. There's also a stormwater basin to be installed there on some formerly residential properties that were in the floodplain that are now part of the park. The recreational improvements, we have things like creation of a tot lot, creation of ADA accessible walkways, creation of ADA accessible parking spaces, redoing sport court, basketball courts, or par basketball courts, and the walkways to tie it all together. In terms of funding, since it's, I think, front of mind for everyone, we had estimated the cost of the project for recreational and the stormwater components in 2024 at about $1.8 million. Because as the schedule plays out now, we'll probably be paying the last of the contractor invoices in 2026. So it might be 1.9 or 2 million, I think, by the time we account for inflation over those two years. There is a good amount of funding secured for the project in the form of two grants. The first one is a DCNR grant in the amount of $250,000 to fund recreational improvements, specifically ADA accessible recreational improvements, like the parking and the walkways. That grant has been extended a couple of times, it's currently set to end December of this year. So in order to extend it, we've been in communication with DCNR, and they've kind of told us some information that we need to submit to them in order to keep that alive. It's things like a contractor, the consultant to do the design, draft bid documents, draft plans, updated schedule, and a bunch of DCNR specific documents that all go in the bid package. Those are all things we can do. The other piece of funding that's been secured for it is from National Fish and Wildlife Federation, NIFWIF. That's in the amount of $500,000, and that's for the floodplain restoration, the stream restoration part. So with those two together, we have about $750,000. And I think, like a lot of your other park projects, we're still looking at others, and I think there's one that just came across my desk today that I want to talk to Kevin about, maybe for playground equipment. So that's, we have about 750 in hand, hope to get more, total project cost about 2 million. The proposal that we've submitted that's before you tonight is to basically take some preliminary work that has been done by others and bring it all together into a construction contract package that you can hire a contractor to go out and build. And then to put the project out to bid, get that contractor on board, oversee the construction, and do the construction inspection. The various things that we would be, I just got to hit the highlights, the big topics. We would be designing a pedestrian bridge that goes across the stream. Once that floodplain is lowered, the existing bridges that are there won't work anymore, they'd be suspended in midair. So need to replace the bridge, that needs a structural design and geotechnical design, which is included. We would design the park improvements that I mentioned, so the tot lot, the walkways, the parking, sport courts. There's a component for landscaping, and there's also a permit, there's a DEP permit required. And there's also a permit, there's a DEP permit required because all this work is within the floodway and floodplain of Spring Creek, all of Donald Taylor Park really is within that floodplain. So we need to get a general, or I'm sorry, joint permit from both DEP and Army Corps. And then we put the project out to bid, like I said, and do construction inspection. So that's our proposal that's before you tonight. Our quote for those services is $186,000, which is right around 10% of construction cost. We think that's about where it should be. Typically, we would budget 10% of construction cost for design, 10% for construction. We're doing all of construction and some of design and we come in around 10%. So I think we're, we're in about the range where we need to be. That's it in a nutshell, happy to answer any kind of questions you might have.
Just a point, President. Something I didn't ask you in the last meeting. As far as our, meeting our requirements under DEP, this gets us to that point, mostly.
Well, there are two rounds of requirements from DEP. There's a previous round that ended in 2023 and was extended for two years to 2025. We're just now getting to the tail end of that. Those requirements were met by the first phase of the stream restoration project that was up above the baseball field. The next round is scheduled to go into effect late 2025 and take us through 2030. We'll see if those dates really come true with DEP. Based on the draft guidance, there's a good bit of work associated with this project that will be creditable to our next round, but I wouldn't go so far as to say that it's going to get us there. I don't know the numbers at this point because they haven't really been published in anything but draft form. But the type of stormwater BMP that we're doing is center of the bullseye for the type of BMP that DEP wants to see in the next round. It's really just a question of whether it's large enough.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
The only thing I was going to add to that for the public is what we're talking about right now is the pollutant reduction plan that we're required to do for stormwater, for our MS4 permit. So that's, that's generally something that we would talk about in the Stormwater meeting, but since this is a joint component, that's why we're discussing it at this meeting as well. Does anybody have any other questions? I actually do. Do you have, which, I'm putting you on the spot, so I apologize if this isn't something that you know off the top of your head. Do you know which portion of this will be for the township portion, which it said it's just the playground? Like what would the amount for that be? And then the other amount that would be stormwater?
I can give you that estimate as we had them worked up in 2024 dollars. So this is a little bit different when the final tally comes in in 2026. But we anticipated, about 650 plus two, so about 900 in township funds and about 150 in stormwater funds. And the reason really for the disparity is because the NIFWh grant that we got for the stormwater work was twice the size of the DCNR grant that was received for the, for the recreation work. Ideally, both of those numbers go down because we can find another grant or two between now and next summer. But that's, that's what we have currently.
Okay. And then again, for the public too, the township side would be higher because of the bridge as well.
Yeah, the bridge is a major cost component for sure, yeah.
Does anyone have anything else at this time? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And again, I just say thank you to you as well as to Dahlwood for the work that you guys do with identifying grants. That's something that obviously has real dollar value. So, so we appreciate the work that you do. And I'll extend it to Dahlwood as well for trying to find alternate sources of funding. Thank you. All right, we are up to item 18, approval of a lease agreement with McNaut and Company for Chambers Point Park.
Motion to solicitors' form and content.
What was the?
That was my comment.
Right.
What was the motion?
Motion to solicitors' form and content.
Okay. That's what I was, not exactly in those words, but yes, okay.
Yeah, just to clarify, my office prepared the lease agreement and shared it with the McNaut and Company within the last couple of days. There are a couple details still to be worked out, primarily just a mechanism to specifically identify the portion of the much larger parcel that would actually be leased by the township. I'm not expecting many other changes, but there will be small details to fill in.
And I just wanted, I spoke to Mr. Joel McNauton today and he basically said the same thing. He doesn't really, he just wanted it to say, whatever Mr. Steele said that was very official, he said pending legal review. So that's what I was going to say, so.
Yeah, because I mean, the simple matter is how do you identify one large parcel? And we just got to narrow down the scope of just this piece. So that's one of the changes between Joel and him, they would have to change.
And he, he did not feel there was, there was anything to slow it down because we don't lead for, this time we have a four week gap between this meeting. And so I did offer a table or anything like that and he was fine with it. So I think we've addressed it in the motion.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I did read through the lease agreement and that was actually going to be my question tonight, is that we don't have a parcel number, we don't have any coordinates, we don't have information on. I mean, we, there's nothing in here that delineates exactly what property we're even talking about. So I don't know how, how you formulate an agreement without any information in it. I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm listening to what you're saying and.
That's exactly what still needs to be added. I'm sure Commissioner Steele can explain further.
Can I ask why we're not tabling this then until we have the information actually in the lease agreement that we can review and we know exactly what parcel and how much acreage? And like, does it not seem like a cleaner way to do things rather than fill it in later?
We, we know what partial, we know exactly where the piece of property is. It sits in between three water basins, I don't want to make sure I'm not mistaken. The problem is it's not subdivided. So to get the language in there, whether we use longitude and latitude, whatever it may be, that's the only piece that's missing. This, this piece, let me finish, please, just let me finish. This piece of property is clearly identified, whether you go to the county, you look at a Google map. The problem is it is a one partial piece of property, that's all. So the identification between our solicitor and Joel is to define this, what is it, two acres, Zach? Two acre plot? Because it's already been identified in the first, I think it's a two acre plot. But if you look at your Dahlwood packet when we first approved this park already, that, that portion has already been plotted. So we know exactly where this park is going to go. It is putting it in words because it is one big partial that the legal, between Joel and the McNauton Company have to work out.
Yeah, at the meeting, the second meeting in June, June 11th, there was a document titled Chambers Point Sketch Plan that loosely defined the area. I mean, as far as this lease agreement is concerned, to be honest, you could just attach that sketch as an exhibit. But at some point, the specific portion of the larger parcel would actually need to be legally defined for the future plans of actually conveying that portion to the HOA and eventually to the township. For purposes of this lease agreement, that's the sketch.
All right, I just want to make a point that I'm not okay for future for us to have lease agreements in front of us without parcel numbers, without acreage and without having all the details worked out. I think that's a shoddy way of doing business. I wouldn't want, I mean, I wouldn't encourage anyone else to do it that way. I'm willing, I voted for the park, I'm fine with the park. I mean, I think that we, you know, I'm all for parks and recreation. I don't think that this is the way we should be doing things. I'm going to vote for the lease agreement. I would like to see the final agreement before the township signs.
It makes no difference to me whatsoever if it's done tonight or if it's tabled until next month.
Well, I'm fine, I just want to see the final lease agreement that you've worked out before it's signed. And secondly, I'm not for just attaching a lease agreement to a sketch without having the legal description in the lease. Thank you.
And just for the public, the draft that we have right now, the amount of the lease would be $1 per year. So that.
It doesn't matter.
We'll assume responsibility for a park that's, that's in Chambers Point. So that's, and this isn't something that is uncommon or new. We talked about Ivy Ridge Park, same thing, that it was eventually turned over to the township. Burrard Park was like, that's our newest park that's in Rutherford. So this, this is not new or groundbreaking information. This is something that obviously the attorney for the property owner, as well as our attorney have had communications and are on the same page and are both okay with moving forward with it, just to get the technical terms. But absolutely is fine for us to share, like, we obviously would share the fully executed document with the board.
We, we should really have the information in the document tonight when we're taking it up for consideration, Madam President. And that's my point. And it doesn't matter how much and how many years we're leasing it for, so a dollar for 25 years. I read the lease. I also noticed that there's no legal description of the property in the lease and that for most people would be concerning. So I'm not.
We're all on the same page of we approved the park, we approved the cost estimate.
That's fine.
So we know the location of the park.
It doesn't matter.
We just heard that we don't have the technical, longitude, latitude.
And we don't do shoddy work on this board. And I'm just asking for the future to, let's have the information in front of us, let's be prepared.
Right, well, I think Joel McNauton is a professional, I think Solicitor Kokorezzi is a professional and I trust their judgment.
I'm not trusting anyone's judgment, I'm the one up here voting. So I'm going to trust my judgment.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Tuckey.
Yeah, I actually agree with Commissioner Zubek, moving forward, that any document that goes in front of us, that we're going to be voting on, I would appreciate it being fully intact rather than missing parts, please. Thank you.
And again, for the public, I'm just going to look through and see how many parts are missing. Because from what I'm seeing right now is three things.
Madam President, when we just voted on the, the approval of the park.
It's like a 10-page document.
The partial number was not.
I have no issue with the park, I'm already sleeping that.
The partial number was not on the park when we just approved the park last meeting. You know, you know, the grandstand, the stupidity.
It's not grandstanding and stupidity, it's stupidity on your part not to have the legal description in the lease.
Are you done?
No, I'm just tired, I'm tired of you.
You're an adult, act like one, please, that's all I'm asking, that's what I'm tired of.
Attitude on the board, I'm tired of it.
But, but all I'm asking for and what I'm tired of is.
Every single time I say something, let me clarify. Every time I say something, let me clarify. Every time I bring up a point, let me correct you, let me do this. You know what, I can't ever just.
We should all just go remote.
You know what, that would be great, and then I can mute you.
Sorry, that's funny. Do we have, do we have anything to add to the discussion? Because we, I'd like to wrap up this meeting at some point this evening.
I'm okay, I have a three-year-old that acts better than that.
So, all right, I'm not hearing anything else. Secretary Savage, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Tuckey.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubek?
Yes, but I would like to see the final draft, thank you.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele? President Ellison?
Yes. All right, we are up to consideration of resolution, no truck parking and towaway zone designation at Cordial Lane.
Motion.
I apologize for you people that came for this and you got stuck here for hours. But I will, we have a motion in a second, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Stauffer.
I get the motion.
Who did the second?
Commissioner Connolly.
I didn't hear it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, and I was going to say the same thing to the gentleman from Winding Oaks. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for coming to the podium in support of the work that Lieutenant Milstein did and thanks for sticking it out, appreciate you being here. So we had received complaints about Cordial Lane, specifically regarding the parking of very large-sized vehicles up and down the street, which the gentleman spoke about at the podium tonight. Lieutenant Milstein, as usual, did an expert job with his traffic study. You can see that in your packet, there's a bunch of pictures there from actually out on Cordial Lane where you can actually see it, how much space a large truck takes up on that street. So his recommendation isn't to eliminate parking for every type of vehicle along that roadway, which would be the elimination of a lot of parking. It is simply the elimination of the parking of trucks, the whole length of Cordial Lane. In addition to making it a no parking zone, he's also recommending, and it's would be my recommendation as well, to make it a towaway zone at the same time. That will greatly help us keep Cordial Lane wide open to make it safe travel for folks to live in the area. And I hadn't even thought about the snow plowing that will eventually come, but that'll certainly make snow plowing a lot easier as well. So that would be my recommendation. I would support Lieutenant Milstein's recommendation that the entire length of Cordial Lane be made, no parking for trucks and make it a towaway zone.
Thank you.
I have some quick discussion.
Go ahead.
A resident who spoke tonight, I don't want to single the person out in case somebody's not happy about, sent me an email describing the incident and had said, I believe at that point, that there had been some complaints about the parking to the township and the police. But that was the first that I thought about and was pointed out that we needed to do something. So it followed the process. In between there, the same resident reached out to me and I think the question was how many people would be needed to sign a petition to get something done? And I think basically my response was, we needed one signature on the report and it was from Lieutenant Milstein who was, who was working on it. So the process doesn't always work as quick as you want, but we have to, you know, when we take an action like that, there has to be a study and there has to be a presentation here. Right after getting the email, I went over there and I'm in that neighborhood often, but I was shocked at how far out the vehicles were from the curb because of the size of the vehicles. So there was, there was a lot of things going on. You could tell that it wasn't just a tractor with somebody that lived there. It was obvious people were parking there. We've seen in other places in the township, this problem moves from place to place. Unfortunately, some of the people that do this also throw things out of the, the vehicle, fast food things. Unfortunately, they don't always make it to a rest stop to go to the bathroom. So we, we find containers that they urinated, you know, there's a lot of negatives. But they were using that spot because they knew if they went onto the, the shopping center part, there would be a swift enforcement and towing and fines. So your solution tonight will probably end up in somebody else's problem somewhere. These same people will try to find another place. But I'm glad that you brought it to our attention the way you did because individual enforcement wasn't going to work. If, you know, if somebody got a ticket or they were asked to move, someone was just going to keep coming in that spot. So now it'll be signed and when I'm in your neighborhood, I like the view of the shopping center rather than, than the trucks and the trailers and it certainly was abused. So I appreciate you coming and I hope, and I think I explained in the follow-up email, that it wasn't necessarily adversarial, that there, there was two different opinions on this, it just was a process. And we'll find out in a minute when we vote if that process has worked. So thank you and thank Chief Stauffer and Lieutenant Milstein for putting the time in, so thank you.
Do we have any further discussion at this time? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, correct me if I'm wrong, I have this as Resolution R-2025-42. Okay, so as of right now, that's what we're going with. If I need to amend that number, we'll do that. We're up to item 20, announcement of public budget workshop dates for the 2026 budget. We have a schedule, we'll get the schedule, put on the website. We can get a link on the Facebook as well. As it stands right now, September 2nd, September 9th, September 16th and October 7th are going to be the public meetings and they will begin at 6:00. So if anyone's interested in coming and listening to the discussions that will take place with regard to different departments' budget for next year, you're welcome to attend and encouraged to attend. All right, we are up to visitors' requests and comments. If you have any comments, please come forward and state your name as well as write it down, as well as your address too.
Yes, hi, I'm Gary Harvey, 105 South 47th Street. So the contract with Rutherford Fire Company is signed and approved.
The sale of the building or what?
The lease of the building. So the township now owns the Rutherford Fire Company?
I defer to Solicitor Kokorezi.
I'm actually not sure what has happened with that since the board approved the terms of the agreement.
No, if my memory serves me right, that, that full document was executed by the Board of Commissioners and the Rutherford Fire Company. And sent to the county. So I think, I don't, did we get it changed over yet or not?
You requested a copy, that's why you're asking. Right, you requested a copy at one of these meetings.
No, I don't need a copy. I'm just, I'm just wondering if the document was signed and that the township now owns the Rutherford Fire Company.
I know the documents were signed. I don't know the recording of the county level. Like when it officially happens or stamped or whatever. But everything that we could do or Rutherford could do, correct me if I'm wrong, has happened.
We executed the night of the meeting. We were waiting on the president. Joe was out of town. They were waiting for Joe to come back. And Joe has executed that. And that was dropped off at the county to change that partial over to the township.
Okay. And just a couple of questions for Chief Eberson. On tonight's agenda, I see that we're, we're looking at hiring five new part-timers. And I guess if they pass their background checks and so forth, are you considering putting any of them, any of those firefighters in Rutherford?
We had this discussion at the Fire Board meeting. When we have staffing, they get placed where they need to be. And in fact, one day last week, I believe it was, we did have careered staffing at Rutherford because it allowed us to put rigs in service at both stations. But the problem is it's not consistent that we have that many working. You know, Monday, I believe we had zero. Today, we had one. So hopefully, the more we get, the odds increase that you have more working.
You'll have more from Rutherford. Okay, so-
But we are, we are, and just to touch on that, it's not just about the career people. It's, you know, the volunteers now are getting in the habit of, you know, if there's only one person at Rutherford and there's two people here, one will come over here so there's at least one piece staffed with three, vice versa. We like, it's just a constant shipping because volunteers come in for some one or two hours. Some of them are there for 24 hours. Some are there for two hours, leave, come back two hours later. It's just, you know, we're shifting people, but not shifting constantly.
Constant, okay. And one other question for you. So if you hire these five, I guess that'll bring your total up to 14, I think you said earlier?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have like, or do you keep track of the number of hours you're getting from your, your part-time paid guys? I mean, the number of hours that they staff?
Yes. And you can have a copy of it. I have it right here.
I'd appreciate that.
This is actually volunteers and yeah, career staff is on there. That's for, I believe that's for June, the date's at the top. If you want any other months, just get ahold of me.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time?
Hello, Paul Whitboy, Seven Yoke Lee Flame. I just want to thank the board for your prompt action. I will say this was, your action was very, was very prompt. We appreciate the attention Lieutenant Milstein gave us. He was very cooperative, asked some great questions. And we, I do think this is a pretty prompt response. I think it was less than three months.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I appreciate you guys bringing it up.
So I think it was noteworthy in three months. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one question though. The signage will go up within a few weeks. We'll get it as soon as we possibly can. Okay. I'll have to make the signs. It's not, you know, it's not a common sign.
I understand.
We'll make it happen as soon as we can. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors requesting comments at this time? All right, hearing none. Oop, I'm sorry. See quit. Yeah, seeing none, yeah, actually.
Okay. All right, just damn, this is another meeting. Okay, Chris Freese, 38 Arrow Brisbane Street. I'm glad that you three voted on passing NFPA rules. Because that's what you said. You're going to get NFPA for the township. Mr. Eberson, we had a discussion last week about NFPA, didn't we?
Yep.
And could you tell the board what the, what the criteria is for NFPA 1710?
I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not going to quote it.
It's four minutes.
Okay. And that is for career fire departments?
Yes.
Correct.
And I think, I mean, we hear how much the volunteers are paid. I have no problem with that. And they have rules, main rules for the station, et cetera, et cetera. So I think you've already reached that plateau of paid firefighters. And Mr. Eberson and I had another discussion last week. And what I asked him was, and, and I understand we're not fully staffed. And I thought it was that, didn't I?
Yes.
Chris, can you, can you talk into the mic there?
Oh, sure.
The people online won't be able to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
And in that discussion, I said if you have two, two pla, two pieces staffed at 49, it'd be nice to bring one over to Rutherford or Chambers Hill just for that NFPA 17, 1710 timing. Because once you go to 1710, and a case could be made that you already have paid firefighters. It's not career, as Mr. Eberson says.
They've actually redefined both those standards. And I think they're defined now as mostly career and mostly volunteer. And we still follow under the mostly volunteer category.
Right. So what you're counting on is you can go with 1720?
I mean, that, that's the goal. The ultimate goal is, I'm tell, I say this, a minute and 30 seconds, a fire truck on the street. Like that is, that is the goal right now. When we have extra people, as you heard me say, we do shift them around when we can. And we did.
I understand that.
We had one, we had one day that we had a ton of people and everybody worked together to be able to get all the staffing correct.
And I understand that and you're working on it. I understand that. But what I'm getting at is you folks are getting close to being 1710 rules, which means four minutes, which you're going to need a station, a piece, a rig getting out of Chambers Hill to meet that 1710.
What data do you have to show that?
Pardon me?
What data do you have to show that?
What data? Oh, uh, that, remember you said that, um, uh, you think you-
You were using Google Maps.
Yeah, I was using Google Maps.
I use ISO maps.
Okay. And-
From the insurance service.
Could you give me a copy of that?
Yeah, you can come in and we, there's multiple ones. So you can come in, I'll print whatever you want.
What time you in tomorrow?
I'll be here.
That's when it gets out here tonight. Pardon me?
I'll be here all day, so.
I'll catch up with you tomorrow. Because I really would like to see that. Because you, you did say that the ISO map said that you're good with Rutherford.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Connolly said you have a training department down at the landfill?
We have a pad, a, um, I guess asphalt pad that-
So you have a place to train, not a training facility?
And a hydrant and-
Training ground.
Yeah, it's like training grounds.
Oh, well, could I have a tour of it?
Yeah.
Could you give me that? Would an hour be long enough to sell?
How about one of the times that you-
I think you should give them a tour.
How about one of the, one of the times you drive by the fire station, you stop by and I told you to come do a ride-along?
Hey, I stopped at 45 yesterday right before that call.
Oh, there you go.
All righty.
Yeah.
Now, seriously, I'd like to see that.
I'll take you down tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right, hearing none. We have item 22, possible stormwater violations for investigation. That was part of our stormwater meeting. That's on our agenda every week that we have a meeting. Um, we're going to go over that and go to commissioners' requests and comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tuckey?
Yes, before I start that, I'd like to just let the public know, anyone that's interested in applying for the Dolphin County Local Share Grant. We will have information on the web here within the next few days. And I'm hoping to have a link attached to it to be able to get the information that you'd be looking for for these grants. The staff member is going to be Brittany Partzinski. She's going to be helping with that. And if there's any questions, we're unhappy to email me or you can call me at my cell phone number, which is 717-773-9044. The dates of this process started July 1st. Because of the time that it should be submitted with the request letter, that it should be submitted to the county by September 2nd. So because of that, the next two meetings in August, which is Wednesday, August 6th and Wednesday, August 13th. For that to be, be able to put in the agenda in time, once it's reviewed, we would need the information from whoever's applying by Monday, August 4th, preferably by noon, and Monday, August 11th, by noon. So this process can go fairly smooth. Again, if there's any questions at all, please don't hesitate to reach out to Brittany or myself. As for comments, I mean, I said what I did during the meeting. I don't want to hold everyone up by talking anymore. I just hope that while we have people still willing to help a Chambers Hill Fire Company, that we allow them to do so. The piece of equipment, presser, so fire engine, et cetera, in the garage at the complex facility, it should be up there in that fire station. They do have people that want to run. It's going to be a process to do that. I understand that. But they definitely have two people that just passed their pump certifications. If, uh, yeah, if, if things keep progressing, which I believe they are, I mean, there's capable people there that are there. I understand they're working on continually to keep growing it. They do have a firefighter that just applied not long ago. His name's Jaden. And he is definitely eager on being part of that fire company and working hard at it. And I believe the community and this board should be supportive of Chambers Hill Fire Company to continue to keep working, to keep that location going. When it comes to the spending of what's going on in this township, I want to see things get done too. But we have to be sensible with how we're spending the resources we have. I do understand applying for grants. I, I get all that. But that figure that was put out there, out there, what? It was good six months ago roughly from Dawood about the building costs. I know for certain that it was not accurate, especially with the building project that we had. And knowing that the building project that you're going with was definitely a lot more than $24 million back three-plus years ago. There's no doubt, there was documentation showing that. Not trying to get in the weeds of anything, but that's truly what happened. And Dawood's estimate, I believe, is very flawed just because of the information we had prior. I appreciate everyone that came out tonight. Grateful that members of the community bring in issues in the community. And I'm happy to see our police on top of it. And you got decent results out of it because of it. So thank you for being involved. And I hope everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zubek?
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm, a lot was said during the meeting. There was a lot of misinformation on some of my fellow commissioners, of course. There was a lot of truth to some things. So if any residents have any questions on some of the things that I pointed out that are not entirely accurate, I would encourage anyone that would like to reach out to me, to call me so that we can talk about it and I can provide you with the factual information that I have available. On a different issue, I had asked last week for a full list of vehicles, year, make, model, and who they are assigned to from all three entities. Commissioner Tuckey followed that up by asking for mileage. I have yet to receive it and I would like to have that as soon as possible. And I also asked for, uh, basically to see the original, the original ordinances that we're supposed to be filing within the township building with the stamp. There's a lot of other requirements for record retention that we're supposed to be doing. And I would like to ensure that this township is fulfilling its record retention requirements as per state law. And so as soon as possible, I would like to see that physically in person and preferably within the next few days. And then also, I would like to touch on an issue that this really is concerning, I think, when it comes to the residents' ability to be provided with the services that they wish to have. And part of this is the couple that was here last week that brought forth an issue that they were having with billing. I had set out to assist them. They thanked me for my assistance. I had some conversations with Zach. We got their bill squared away. And by the end of it, there were some checks that they had submitted that our township later found were submitted. And there was a $500 credit. Today, there was a meeting. What I'm trying to bring up, though, is the fact that they had reached out to Mr. Gordon and they had specifically requested that I be part of a meeting for their comfort so that we could go through the billing. It wasn't to, for any other purpose than to go through the building with a staff person from HRG and Mr. Gordon. And throughout that process, well, later Commissioner Connolly had responded back and said that anybody on that email chain would be removed if they weren't a part of the meeting and it would be him and Commissioner Steele in the meeting. And the homeowner responded back and said, well, if there's not going to be a me, if, if their only wish was that I'd be included in the meeting and if there wasn't going to be a meeting, then they were just going to pay the bill and they wouldn't be present for any meeting. At which time Commissioner Connolly responded and told them that there would be a meeting with or without them to discuss their issue, which I find extremely concerning that they would be treated in that manner so as to be forced to attend a meeting. And furthermore, they should have had their wish. If they request any commissioner on this board, anybody, to be in a meeting, then they should be afforded that opportunity. Somebody could have bowed out and said Commissioner Zubek should be in the meeting because they requested her to be in a meeting. And I can't understand why we're continuing to ignore the wishes of residents in our township. I can't understand why they were forced to meet with people that they didn't want to meet with to resolve their issue. And yes, I, I did speak with them this afternoon and they said that, you know, that they're comfortable with whatever we worked out. And, you know, and I was able to speak with Zach and we had that resolution last week before they came to this meeting. But it's not okay. It's not okay to do that. And, you know, not only is it not okay, but you know what? It's bullying. And I just want the residents in the township to know that I will not be bullied. I will continue to do my best for the residents in the township, and I will not stand by and have the residents be bullied. If they want something, they pay the taxes, they should have what they want. It shouldn't be any one person on this board dictating who should and shouldn't be in a meeting. Irrespective of whether or not you're the chair, we are a member, a board of five. We were a board of five at-large members. The chair of a committee, yeah, you oversee the budget, if someone comes to you, you oversee that. If someone comes to a commissioner, and the commissioner can address it with staff, then the commissioner can address it with staff, if they're having issues, then they can go to the chair of the committee. But this is not a dictatorship. You don't decide which resident wants to have what commissioner assist them with what issue. We're all here to help the residents of Swatara Township. And I see eye rolls, and I see, you know, things going on to my left, it's fine. But you know what? I don't think, I think that that was sending a poor message to those residents, and I think it just adds up over time, when there's such disrespect and ignorance on the part of members of this board. And then to address a couple other issues, moving on, there's all kinds of numbers being thrown out. The one number that stuck out to me is that we have 69 firefighters in this township, according to Commissioner Connolly, and I quote, he said, "Everything is great." But yet you have another commissioner on this board that's saying we can't guarantee service. There is definitely communication issues on this board when you have one person saying everything is great, and another member of the board saying we can't guarantee service. It's our responsibility to guarantee service. It's our responsibility to ensure that our stations are properly manned, and that we have apparatus in our stations. And there's no reason why there's part-time paid firefighters, whether you have a lease at Chambers Hill or not. I think that's just an excuse. It take away all the paper, and anybody that's in charge of fire service in this township, and anybody that has a majority on this board, because I, obviously, I've been ignored on things that I've asked for, can, can ask that there be coverage placed at Chambers Hill for the benefit of Chambers Hill's residents. And I've heard time and time again, certain members with an agenda say, "We have a Swatara Township-wide fire service." Well, if you have a Swatara Township-wide fire service, there's no reason why you can't utilize every equipped station in this township to run fire out of it. So I'm tired of the excuses. If you, if you, if, where there's a will, my father used to tell me this all the time, where there's a will, there's a way. And I also, you know, I got a little emotional this evening when I was providing some comments on the loss of our friend Judge Smith. And I do want to go back to that for a minute, because there's one thing I did want to say that I didn't get to say, and that is, I've come across a lot of people in our township over the years, and I've been here my whole life, by the way. So for anybody that says that my being here is temporary, just like Commissioner Connolly, I plan on being here the rest of my life, but I've been here my whole life. But I've run into people in public, you know, and I've run into people that have made changes in their life, that have actually, you know, you know, they were going down the wrong path, and they had to go before, you know, the district judge for one thing or another, and they've made changes in their life. And I've had those conversations, and you know a man's character when you run into those people, and despite how bad things were at that time in their life, they can talk kindly of someone who may have had to throw the book at them, or, you know, give them, you know, a fine, or do something that they didn't like. You know a man's character when that person that had that type of trouble can say, "You know what? I'm really sad because he was a great man." So I just want to leave people with that, that, you know, that's the way I like to, you know, he was a judge, but that's the way I like to judge people too. It doesn't matter, you know, what you've done in your life, it's what, how you make, what changes you can make to move forward and do better for yourself, and respect for authority is number one in my book. But, so anyway, I want to leave everyone with that, and say thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening with me, and I wish everyone a good evening, and again, my condolences on the loss of our friend Judge Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly?
I'll start with the fire service report. That's where I got the number 69, it's on a report, it'll be posted publicly, it'll be online, so. The reason I said we had 69 active firefighters is because that's how many actively were involved in a fire in June, so that's what the report was. That number does change, I'm not sure that I said everything was great, but that is a great number because it was as low as 54 not too long ago, so obviously, the number manpower is, is going up. And then another statistic that I want to put out for fire, a couple things here. 727 calls so far this year through June. Last year, we had a little bit under 1,300, so at this pace, there's going to be an additional couple hundred fire calls. And these are answered, they're, sometimes they're a carbon monoxide detector, smoke alarm. Sometimes a couple of vehicles have collided, and people are bleeding, and they're upside down hanging from a seatbelt. Our firefighters are responding, they're coming out to those incidents. We heard about the home response, and I respect and thank the firefighters from years ago that would leave their house when they were available, get on a fire truck and put out a fire. But I also like the fact now that we're getting out quicker. The difference between five, and this is, this is the yearly, on those calls, this is the yearly response time, 5 minutes 21 seconds. That's, that's to the scene of an emergency. Sometimes they're canceled, sometimes false alarm, but that's to the scene of an emergency. Five hundred, or five minutes 21 seconds. I don't think there's anybody in here that wants to see fire stations closed, and they have 100-year history, but you don't want to wait eight, and 10, and 12 minutes while your house is burning, or somebody that you love is bleeding. So those are good numbers, and that is positive, and we're doing the best to get it to where we want, where we want it to go here. The comment Mr. Tuckey made, that if we decrease taxes, if we did something as bad as decrease taxes here, that big businesses would benefit more than homeowners. Well, it's a property tax, so depending on how much your property is worth, that's how much money you save. But it's the same way when you increase taxes. If you have $100,000 property, it's going to increase incrementally. On the issue with Commissioner Zubek wanted to be in a meeting, and she, she said she was requested. This is from Pennsylvania Sunshine Law that I got from the Office of Open Records.
I didn't, I didn't, I said somebody could have bowed out.
If you can't restrain yourself, I'll turn off the microphone.
As any prearranged gathering, so this was a prearranged gathering from people that had a dispute or a concern, and again, the conversation today was great, and I think it was resolved, but they had a concern, and it had to do with codes zoning and planning, which I'm the committee chair of.
They didn't request it.
And it had to do with stormwater, that Chairman Steele, they're calling him Chairman Steele, is the chairman of the stormwater. So that's two people. The law says we can't have three. Now, Commissioner Zubek wanted to be the third one because the people asked her.
No, I didn't want to be a third one, I said you could have bowed out.
She could have met with those people anytime, but in this official meeting, the law said that one more than half is a quorum. So three people weren't allowed, we resolved the issue. I, she had an interest in it, but she wasn't necessarily a person who had the committee chair or the chair of the board. And it says, a quorum is the minimum number of voting members that must be present in order to conduct agency business. So that's why we have committees where a person is a committee chair, and you can have two people on a committee, but she can't have three. She had three, okay, so technically, it really didn't involve her, but the resident wanted her there, so, so, so she would have been the third person. And she can talk to residents, and no one said you can't talk to residents. Okay, so, so, so you helped them, but we had a-
Just ignore her and continue your comments.
So, on that, on that same subject.
Act like a child, it's fine.
On that same subject, after last week's meeting, we had two citizens come up and make an allegation and accusation. So I sent this to Superintendent Stoffer. Could you please review police calls generated by our Swatara Township Codes and Planning Department in the last year? In a recent public meeting, so-and-so-and-so-and-so, I'm not going to say their names, two citizens stated that Mr. Gordon has called the police on citizens involved with codes disputes. I'm the committee chair, and I heard that at a public meeting, so imagine me hearing that at a public meeting. I didn't hear it, you know, internally or from Mr. Gordon. And I said, "I'm not aware of any of these incidents." Both citizens stated they had additional information to support their allegations, and they would provide it. So they made a claim, they said they had some information, they would provide it. I just simply asked, "Please include any documentation supplied, or statements that were provided by so-and-so-and-so-and-so, supporting their public claims of police involvement." And the chief, who is a busy man, got back to me pretty promptly, and said, "I've completed a careful review of all police calls for service since January 1st, 2025, involving our codes department. I specifically looked for police reports involving a request for our officers to respond to the codes department for an active incident. I found one such incident, which was reported on June 27th, and that's the one incident that the people were referring to." But they claimed there were additional incidents, it says, "This report carries our incident number, I'm not going to say what it is, but during that incident, an employee, yes, another employee, to contact the police, goes through and says that I also spoke with Director Gordon, and neither of them had any incidents throughout that year." And that the two people who made the claim here then didn't give the information to the chief. So we seem to have a situation where sometimes people will come to the microphone, and they'll say things that aren't accurate. Now, I don't know where they got the information, but they felt confident enough to speak about it publicly. Something that didn't happen. Then they went as far as to say they would follow up with the supporting information. Didn't happen. But what we had last week, and in other weeks, is a staff member, a professional that works for this township, basically being accused of something or being challenged on things that didn't happen, or questioned on facts. And that, that's getting, you know, a little bit out of hand. That you can, you can have an opinion, but you can't have your own facts. So I just want to say, I'm sorry that, you know, those accusations were made. You know, cooler heads prevailed today, it seemed like we got through the thing. But we switched the issue from being unhappy about a situation. Nobody wants to get bills that they, they think they don't owe, or that they weren't expecting, I get that. But then we had accusations that the staff member that was involved in that, who I'm going to say was only involved at the start to return escrow money, that was it. Contact, was going to contact somebody to return money, and then the whole thing went haywire, and while we were resolving it and talking about it, as the people involved, the decision-makers getting the facts, we have Commissioner Zubek, who wanted to interject herself into, into the meeting.
I will be asking for that, because you know what?
It's not your turn to speak.
I'm going to, I'm going to wrap up.
Please refrain yourself.
As far as-
Please refrain yourself.
I'm going to wrap this up.
Stop talking, you had your time.
I didn't say a word.
Stop talking.
When, when the person to my right was speaking, I didn't say a word. I didn't interrupt, I didn't say a word. But I'm going to finish up agreeing with her on something. I'm going to agree with her on something. District Magistrate Mike Smith, the judge, awesome person, will be missed. We know that his family's hurting, we're hurting, but there are police officers that served in the past and present that really, really admired that man. So I'm going to end with saying that I offer my condolences, and I, you know, my heart goes out to anybody who is suffering, you know, over the situation. I was very happy to see his procession go by. I didn't expect 30 police vehicles. It was absolutely incredible, and it was a fitting tribute to somebody that I consider an awesome person and a hero in our community, and that's all I have to say. Thanks, everybody.
Vice President Steele?
Lot to unpack there, but let's start first by saying I appreciate every single one of you that logged online and joined us this evening, and those of you that came to be in the presence with us, enjoying the proclamation read on Judge Michael J. Smith, and then the dedication of the park for Kenneth G. and Lorraine J. McLean. I think that was two awesome presentations, and the words that were said about those three individuals were heartfelt, and I think that a community should be proud of the type of people that we have, living here, working here. And that speaks volumes to the type of individuals that we have in this community. Make no mistake that this next set of comments will be at my Republican colleagues. Your chaos, your calamity, and your sense of wanting to cause confusion within this government is disheartening, and pretty much, I tell you what, it's tiring. It's very, very tiring. We had a great night tonight, that started off about joy, about community, about love, about actually trying to do the right thing, but we had to turn south just because we had to. I, I'm to the point now where I'm so damn confused, because I don't know if it's theatrics or that's really you. And if it's really you, I feel bad for the people. But I got to see how you governed, and everything that you're up here fighting against, you didn't fix nothing in the two years that your administration was there. You know what you would do, you would silence your dissenters, and you're still continuing to do that now. You call other people bully, but all you do is come to that microphone and bully people, and you agree with the nonsense. Everything is you agree with her as she bullies people from a microphone that can't even talk. I remember coming to that podium in '22 and '23, it's the same thing. You bang the gaffle, you silence your dissenters. You want to talk about the way the government was ran? Think about what we inherited. Oh boy. Think about what we inherited. You said, please don't, I did not interrupt you, please do not interrupt me. You want to sit back and talk about, "We're not finishing projects"? Give me one project you finished. We're finishing projects that you should have started. We want to talk about Bishop Park? I can remember, I can remember a, I can remember a news article and a broadcast where you're sticking a shovel on Bishop Park, talking about it's going to be done, and it never got done. You had two years to get it done, and it never got done. We're seven months into this year. You do the math, that's 19 months, and we voted to get it done. Shovel's going to be in the ground by the end of this year, and it's going to be completed by the end of July, and it's going to be completed by April. You got a building project that just sat around, you told the public, here's the confusion. You told the public that you were ready to go out to bid, you were ready to go out to bid, so why didn't you put it out to bid? Why didn't you put it out? She couldn't put stop to nothing, she wasn't, she didn't take office in- she didn't take office until January 1, 2024, so. So, so you can, you can, you mind if I finish talking?
Just ignore her, just, she's not there, get gone.
You see how you, you see, this, this confirms where you want to silence your dissenters.
Want to go home.
I sat here quiet while other people talked. You can, you, there's no, there's no way that you can act-
Keep your mouth shut when it's not your turn.
That's, that's exactly it. So here's what I was inheriting with, financial chaos. When you, when you talk about the finances, we were already in the tubes. They already drained $4 million from the savings account down to $1.6 million. You talk about the fire service in Chambers Hill where they say that, you know, we, we did this? Chambers Hill was already out of service, how did we do it? Explain that to me, how did we do it, if Chambers Hill was already out of service? You talk about Brester Fire Company, who sent the letter? The letter wasn't sent in '24- The letter wasn't sent in twenty-four. It was sent soon as you got seated and twenty twenty-two. You talk about Mike Farling? The letter was sent from their administration to ban Mike Farling from running here. This is, this, this, this information from Tucker in Arnsberg was January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Why do we keep grandstanding? Because we want to cause chaos and confusion to the public. Well, the nonsense stops tonight. Because every time you come up here and you want to cause that nonsense and that chaos, I'm going to call you out on that chaos. I really want to take the higher road, but at some point you got to stop confusing the public of actually what's going on and you got to start telling the truth. And I'm not, I'm not here to get reelected, so it ain't about politics or reelection for me. It's about telling you the truth. And what, and, and what you have been told and what you're continuing to be told by these two is outright lies. And it has to stop. Now, you, you keep coming up here at meeting after meeting, talking about, "Give me information, give me information, give me information." You got the information. What are you going to do with it? What's your solution? Give, give me, give me the real solutions. You're talking about budgets. You're talking about spending money. You, you got all the budget reports. You can't even, you don't even ask for a budget report. You're commissioner on a Wednesday only. You don't come in this building. You don't ask for, you don't ask for information from the staff. The staff's here, these are facts. These are facts. You couldn't, you, you, you couldn't even tell us what we spent last month because you don't look at the budget, but you're talking about, "Oh my God, they're wasting money." How you know if you're wasting money if you don't know where the money is? Because you didn't govern your two years and you can't high-level govern now.
That's why you saved over a million dollars.
You didn't.
I'm sorry.
That's why you spent over three million dollars. When you took over the government, you had four million in savings. Now, how, how, when we take over the government, the, the new majority, you got one point six. We, we were faced with seven hundred thousand dollars that we had to pay bills from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. I would love to come in this building or just be a commissioner, where I could come to events and come up here and legislate and do policy. But weekend, week out, it is about keeping us financially afloat when it, when it refers to the general fund. And we didn't do that. That's what we were faced with soon as we came into office. It's sad. It's sad that we continue this nonsense. It is. You can't do nothing but throw insults and I get it because you can't govern. I get it. As far as personnel issues and the issue that was brought up tonight, I was briefed on that just yesterday. That has not been given to the full commissioners yet. And they can't say that when I get a personnel matter, I don't, I don't call them up on the phone and have a conversation with them. No one on this board's been briefed on that issue that was initially brought up by, uh, Commissioner Zubek. But there's another problem. If, if you got something as far as an issue happened, it's a personnel matter that requires discipline, we don't come up here in the public and talk about that. You handle, you handle, you don't even get any names. We don't come up in the public and talk about that. You know what you should do if you're a high-level manager? You pick up the phone, you call the fire chief, you call HR, or you call the committee chair. That's what you do. You don't come out front and make a whole bunch of accusations that no one knows what's going on and say, "Oh, I don't, I didn't, I didn't know the name." And then we say, "Oh, I, I support Commissioner Zubek." You support Commissioner Zubek in what, in what way? We don't even know what happened. But keep in mind, now we want to call HR, but we were against HR. When you get to the financial issue that we just had with the people that came to the podium, we settled that issue, that's right. But when we discussed the financial issue that we had with our billing and then changing our fee schedule, they didn't like that either. When we, when we decided that everybody should be in one financial hub where they're at now, they didn't like that either. But now it's to the bene, now it's to the benefit of the residents where the problem that actually existed is those individuals were cut a check and they shouldn't have had, they shouldn't have, that check should not have been released to them. But how did we fix that? Because we dug down and fixed policy. But they didn't want to do that because they voted against every single strategic and smart business move that we made over the last nineteen months. Isn't that amazing? But now they want to fix the problem, but they voted against every, every solution. I can tell you this, when it comes to governance, when it comes to leadership, when it actually comes to being an actual adult, they can't do it. They just can't do it. And you witness it up here, every single meeting. And I'm tired of it. It gets draining having to come here and deal with this because you know how hard this staffs works. And this staff works hard. And this nonsense that happens in the meetings, it drains the morale of the fire department, the police department, the admin staff, the sewer, the highway. They're affected by it. Because when they see their leaders publicly at odds, and it's not because we want to be, it's just because it's either the theatrics or that's who they are. We got to fix it. And I, what I'm asking you is, if you want to fight verbally, let's do it in the room up here and actually have some good discussions. And then when we come out here, let's have a respectful debate. Say what you want to say and let's, let's move on. But to call the president, stupid, should have banged the gavel? Commissioner Connolly, you know, the way you insulted him? This is absurd. I'm the youngest one on the board because I'm twenty-six. And I know how to act. And I'm going to leave you with this. I have a twelve-year-old, I have a sixteen-year-old, I have a twelve-year-old, I have an eleven-year-old, I have a five-year-old and I have a three-year-old. And my kids have never acted the way that young lady down there just acted tonight. And my youngest is three. And they're respecting, that, that, that young boy's respectful enough that he knows when an adult's talking, he's going to listen. So you keep in mind and pay attention to actually what's transpiring. I appreciate you for coming out again and thank you for logging on.
Thank you. Almost broke it. Yep, absolutely. Absolutely did. Still mean it. Yep. Please shut your mouth. Shut your mouth. No. No, honey, no, honey. I never called you white trash. And I've been waiting literally for years for you to bring that up because the color of your skin has nothing to do with you being trash. It has to do with you using my brother for political gain. If anyone is interested in this discussion, it was talked about in May. Uh, they sent out a mailer that utilized my brother's custody case, which again, this pointless, this is, this is childish, but since you brought it up, I'll, I'll explain it. She used my brother's custody case from when he was fifteen years old. You just talked about people who turn their lives around and you have the nerve to say that when my brother was fifteen years old and he started to have issues with heroin. You did, you did. Please grow up. Please behave like an adult. You are an adult. You're an adult. Please behave like an adult. I'm going to go back to what I originally intended to say. And I'm going to apologize to the public that I let this one get a rise out of me. It is, as Vice President Steele said, it's extremely frustrating to come here and listen to nonsense, lies, when it's easily verifiable. If I say something up here, I have a document to back it up every time. If anyone is interested in the documents, let me know. I have no problem sharing them. What I was going to say before this one had another episode, and again, I take responsibility for reacting to her, um, was that I'd like to, again, offer my condolences to the family of Judge Michael Smith, the police department and all who knew him. Something that was said about him was that he was a man of integrity, that he was honest. And what I would like to see is our board start to embody some of those things as well. I'm going to announce some events. We talked about them briefly, but I'm going to go over them again. On July nineteenth at Vanatta Park, we'll be holding the Swatara Family Fest from twelve to seven thirty PM. Uh, there were some details that were provided earlier. This is a new event and Commissioner Connolly, Vice President Steele, um, members from the police department, Public Works Department, as well as, uh, fire, have been working really hard on this and I'm excited to see, uh, all that they've planned. Uh, and, and I believe it's going to be a successful event and I'm looking forward to continuing that. And we also have on August fifth, National Night Out at Vanatta Park from six to eight thirty. And as I said earlier, if you're interested in being a vendor, you still have until July twenty-eighth to register. That's all I have. Thank you to everyone that takes the time to watch these. Thank you to those of you that made it to the end. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Your motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned at eleven oh three PM.